Welcome to the second and final public hearing of the Portfolio Committee, number three, Inquiring in Teacher Shortages and Education Outcomes in New South Wales. I acknowledge the Darrag people, the traditional custodians on the lands which we are meeting today. I pay my respects to elders past, present, and celebrate the diversity of Aboriginal peoples and their ongoing cultures and connections to the lands and waters of New South Wales. I also acknowledge and pay my respects to any Aboriginal or Torres Strait Islander people who will be joining us today. Today, the committee will be hearing from representatives from the Hawkesbury Teachers' Association, the Independent Education Union, and the Marsman Park Public School, P M C, as well as the New South Wales Department of Education. We'll also hear from Ms Carla Willshear and Ms Jocelyn Burrell. Before we commence, I would like to make some brief comments about the procedure for today's hearing. Today's hearing is being broadcast live via the Parliament's website. A transcript of today's hearing will be placed on the committee's website when it becomes available. In accordance with the broadcasting guidelines, the House has authorised the filming, broadcasting, and photography of committee proceedings by representatives of media organisations from any position in the room and by any member of the public from any position in the audience. Any person filming or photographing proceedings must take responsibility for the proper use of that material. This is detailed in the broadcasting resolution, a copy of which is available from the secretary. While parliamentary privilege applies to what witnesses say given in evidence today, it does not apply to what witnesses may say outside of their evidence at the hearing. I therefore urge witnesses to be careful about your comments that you may make to the media or to others after you have completed your evidence. Committee hearings are not intended to provide a forum for people to make adverse reflections about others under the protection of parliamentary privilege. In that regard, it is important that witnesses focus on the issues raised by the inquiry in terms of reference and avoid naming individuals unnecessarily. All witnesses have a right to procedural fairness according to the procedural fairness resolution adopted by the House in 2018. Due to the short timeframe for this inquiry, there is insufficient time for the usual questions on notice period. However, the committee has resolved that witnesses can provide transcript corrections, clarifications to evidence, and additional information within 24 hours of their receipt of the transcript. If witnesses wish to hand up documents, they may do so through the committee staff. In terms of audibility for today's hearing, I remind both committee members and the witnesses to speak into the microphone. And finally, could everyone please turn their mobile phones to silent for the duration of the hearing? I now welcome our first witness from the Hawkesbury Teachers' Association. Could you please state your name and position, title, and swear either in a affirmation, please?
My name is Rochelle Morwood. I am the president of the Hawkesbury Teachers' Association, but I hope I can speak to you today more as just a teacher from Hawkesbury. I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you so much. Could I invite you to make an opening statement if you'd like? And if so, if you could just keep it short, number one, a couple of minutes.
Sure. Well, I come from currently out teaching the Hawkesbury region. I have been a teacher since 2012 in public schools only. My passion is for public education. I love working with students, and I've done so as a teacher and an assistant principal, and most recently as a librarian. I work in the Hawkesbury, which is an area that has gone through an awful lot over the past couple of years, much the same as everybody else with COVID, but also with fires and floods, and some more floods. I teach and live on Darrag and Gaungara country, which we are very proud of and hope that we can work in a very reconciliatory fashion. But I hope that I can give you some insight today about what it's like being a teacher in public schools and what has changed about the workload and how we are being affected by the teacher shortage on the ground level.
Thank you very much. I'll now open it up to questions, and I'll invite the opposition to start.
Well, we might just... Sorry, I think... Is that the right one? We're okay? Yeah? So, we might just start where you just finished off, which is to give us some insight into what it's like to be a teacher. Today, you said that you've been a teacher for nearly a decade in our public schools. Do you think that it's getting better, or is it getting worse?
That's a really interesting question, because every day I ask myself the same thing. Because when I started as a teacher, and when you're a baby teacher, there is a significant workload. You've got a lot to learn. You come fresh out of university, you've not been on your own with a class before, and you have to work it out with the support of your colleagues, sometimes with the help of students, where they tell you that you've got something right or you didn't get something right. And every year after that first one, I kept telling myself, it's going to be easier this year because I'm more experienced, I know more, I've been doing this job, I'm good at this job, it should get easier, but it doesn't. I work more hours, I think, than I ever have. I feel like I'm always learning, I'm never having, never getting a chance to stop that learning. Professional learning is ongoing as a teacher, and that's always going to be the case. But I feel like a lot of the time, as teaching pedagogy changes, as curriculum changes, we have to learn how to be a teacher all over again, and again, and again. So that learning hasn't really stopped, and the workload keeps up with it. And schools are always going to be busy places. We want them to be busy places because we want them to have everything that encompasses what we want out of a student. We've got to look at their social, behavioural, and educational outcomes. It's not just a simple case of whether they can read and write and work them numeracy. It's making sure that they have the skills to become a good human as they grow up. My workload increased significantly, and I was working as an assistant principal in Western Sydney when my family circumstances changed dramatically and two fostered children came into my family. That was impossible, to have two extra kids in my house and maintain my role as an assistant principal. So I did step down from that. Knowing that I could, I knew how to be a teacher, I would just go back to being a teacher. As an assistant principal, you are a teacher, you're in the classroom all the time. But even as a full-time teacher, I found that extraordinarily difficult, finding that balance between my home and my work, where I could actually have time for my family as well. Because our official hours, you know, from 8:30 to 3 o'clock is when we belong to the students, but then I still have to make sure that I get my programming done, I have to make sure that I get my annotations done, I have to make sure that I get the marking done, the reports done, the individual learning plans done. And that's all coming outside of work hours, because you do get some release time during school hours, but it's two hours a week. And I can spend two hours a week just on one child's issue if I need to. There could have been a disruption on the playground that I need to deal with. I might need to test a student individually, and that's the time in which I can do it. I might need to make a parent phone call, and that can sometimes take 40 minutes. So two hours doesn't give me a whole lot of time to do anything in that administrative side, which has to be done. It's required to be a teacher, you must be accountable for it as well. And we don't begrudge that at all, because if you don't plan for your class, there's a real issue there.
Yeah, and I think that talking about constantly learning and constantly striving, that's really what we want to encourage our kids to do. It's what we try and do in our professional lives as well. But do you get the sense that, in addition to that kind of constant learning, that there has been an additional workload placed on top of you?
Absolutely.
Where's that, what's the cause of that been?
Well, I really, I guess a key example for us has been with the introduction of the NCCD, the National Consistent Collection of Data on Students with Disabilities. There was a big shift in the kind of documentation that we had to carry. So we had to have a lot more annotations and evidence of adjustments that we made for students. Not only do I, I adjust for students on the fly all the time in class. If I know that a student's not quite making the outcome, they're not understanding me, I'll change the way I explain it to them, or I'll change the question that I give to them. And sometimes that'll just be grab a whiteboard and give them a new question written down in front of them, let's try this one, or sit with them for a little bit, or give some extension work to another child. And they're all common practice adjustments for students. Or it could be I put a pencil grip on someone's pencil, or I sit them in a different spot in the class so that they can see the board better. They all have to be documented. And to get to the level of being included on the NCCD, you have to have at least 10 weeks of evidence within your program showing what that adjustment is written down. So that was the first step. And then any student that you do have a degree of adjustment for, you have to create an individual education plan. So previously, individual education plans were looked after by our learning support team or external people that you could draw upon. I haven't seen them in a very long time. They don't really seem to exist anymore. So we used to be able to bring in an expert, they'd come and spend some time in your classroom observing you, observing the student, how you work with them, what adjustments might suit them, and then help you write that plan and implement those adjustments. And in addition to having the plan, you also need to communicate that with the parents. So there's a separate meeting you need to make, you also have to have a review meeting, and then a resolution meeting at the end of the year, determine whether or not that plan's been effective, create some new goals, see whether they still need the plan. And that's all new. And by new, I mean like, obviously several years old, but it's not something that I used to have to do. So even just that change created hours upon hours of documentation. And the same goes for things like collection of data. So my school was involved in a program called the EA4S, the Early Action for Success, which is a program that has stopped now, but as part of that, we had to assess our students against a very, very large checklist called the learning progressions, the literacy progressions and the numeracy progressions. They're quite large, they still do exist now, and some schools are still definitely using them. And it's kind of a way to, I guess, make sure that you can see a child's progress from the start of the learning through to where we want to get them to towards the end. But the checklist itself is extensive, and you don't have time while you're working with the students to be plotting that data onto the checklist. So you might be able to have some paper on the fly, some teachers had iPads, I wasn't one of those. The school that I was working with didn't have them anyway, so it meant that you go home and you sit there with their assessments, and part of our teaching practices is to go through the assessments anyway, find out what the kids do and don't know. But then we kind of had to marry up the assessments that we had based on the outcomes of the syllabus, and then work out how did that translate into the progressions documents? Where do I need to take the data that the children have and say, okay, well, I know that these are the kids that can't subtract and trade over the decade. So I will take that information and then go over to my checklist and make sure that I put that in, or put it straight into the computer, because there is a program that the department provides you to put all that in. It can be helpful, but it can also be challenging, because you can see it over time, but with not every student in every school doing the same progressions, because we didn't have time, or other schools weren't adopted. You would want to see the student progress, but we never had that complete data. So it's a lot of data that we're entering and not seeing that great benefit from. So I think it has some real merit, we just needed more time to do it. So things like that. We have more burdens in workload because the curriculum's changed. So when I first started teaching, I came in on the, what was the new curriculum then? In 2012? And so while I was at uni, I had had the choice of work your assignments on the old curriculum or the new curriculum, and I said, well, there's no way I'm looking at the old curriculum. We came in with a new curriculum, and we had a lot of professional learning in my first couple of years about, okay, how do we implement the English one? Let's trial it through the year, let's see what we get, let's work together as staff. And teachers are really good at that, they collaborate very, very well. We have to, unless we're never going to get through it all. And then, you know, the following year, we started working on the maths one, and then we had geography and history and science as they rolled through, PDHPE. And with each one, we were like, okay, we'll get our head around this one, we'll get our head around this one, we'll get our head around this one. And this year, we now have the mandatory English syllabus and the maths syllabus coming through as well to change the literacy and numeracy. And that is, again, another challenge of taking our program, saying, well, is this still relevant? Is it not? Let's sit down, take some time. And the time allocated really to teachers to sit together within work hours, four days a year, that's what we get to have our professional learning, which is difficult, because there is so much more professional learning we also have to do. I guess the mandatory things I always used to have to do were child protection, which is fantastic. We would have to do our CPR, but we've also got code of conduct, fraud and corruption training. There is training for, there's a new Indigenous component that's come through. We have got the world's longest list of training to be done, it's quite extensive. So if that's our mandatory training, and we've only got the four days in which to get through, there isn't a lot of time left to do our professional learning. So we do that outside of school hours, and we study at home.
Can I, oh, sorry, can I ask two final questions? Oh, sorry, this is a bit of a basic question, excuse my ignorance, but an individual learning plan that only needs to be done for a child who is, has a learning difficulty or special needs child, is that right?
Or they need extension as well. So if they have a significant difference from the past, so if you know you're making a significant adjustment and you think the parents need to be aware of it, if you know that they're quite limited, we use the A B C D E scale. So if we know that they're very likely going to get an E, or they're already at an E level, we would involve the parents and create a plan. But same goes if they're in that A or B level, and we think they could push up to an A, we would create that plan to help make sure that we are documenting their extensions as well.
That's very helpful, thank you. And I just wanted to ask about, so there's lots of different educational sort of resources out there now, particularly I know ARO has been commissioning a lot. Have you used any of those kind of resources? Have you found any of them to be helpful?
A little bit. A part of it's having the time to go through it, which I don't really do, so...
Would it be helpful then if the school said, this is a good educational resource for you to use?
Sometimes, absolutely. It depends on, so for my school at the moment, we've got a particular maths resource that we're very happy with, and we're trying to implement across our school to make sure that our kids are really getting into hands-on mathematics learning, using dice, using counters, solving all the problems in maths. And we're quite enjoying it, but it is more time that we've had to find to take our teachers through that. You, as you're programming your units of work and you think about your students, because the ones that are in front of you and the ones I might have this year are not the same as the kids that I had last year. What they already know is different, what they're going to need to know to get to the end of the point is the same, but how they get there might be different. I might have different behaviours in the class I need to accommodate as well, different personalities, that can make a big difference to my class. So every time that I sit down and program a unit, so for instance, if I'm sitting there doing a maths unit on whole number, and I want to know where are the kids at, do they know their place value, I'll do pre-assessment on that particular group of kids and then take it from there. So I could pick up the program from last year and plonk it straight on, but it won't suit my new kids perfectly. So I'll make sure I do a pre-assessment, find out where that particular cohort of students are at, and then program accordingly. So I might pick some bits from there, but I also might pick it from a whole bunch of other places, think this is a good activity that suits that part that they don't know. This is a good activity that my, this particular group might find fun. One year, I had everything in my classroom, basically rugby league themed, because that's what the cohort of kids that I was teaching, that the only thing that we're interested in was football. So I had to take whatever resources I had and completely change it to be football oriented.
I love your innovation and adaptation, and I think that's really important. And look, and I think that that's one thing that I'm really interested in, is finding a way to allow teachers time to teach and to provide them with the resources, so that it's just then about them focusing on the kids and on the learning and on their progression, rather than having to worry about the...
Definitely. And I think this is something that I have brought on for all of you, if you'd like to comment, this is actually what my typical weekly timetable would look like.
Yeah. You give me these flashbacks to lockdown, lockdown.
I know, it is a bit lockdown.
I used to be stuck in a...
But, I mean, it's a bit of a juggling act when you're trying to fit everything into the day at school, because we have a certain percentage of time that we have for each key learning area, but we've also got to get our school activities in. So, you know, we'll have our little assemblies, where we hand out our awards, and we talk about school rules and values. Then we also have, you know, our sport time, which we, you know, we're trying to get 150 minutes of physical activity into the kids every day, every week, sorry, that's mandated. So 150 minutes of teaching straight out there and physical activity, unless we can integrate it into something else. So we might at the same time be doing maths work and multiplication drills while we're jumping, or anything that we can do to get the kids physical, so we can meet our time requirements, but also get them knowledge. We've got to fit in, I had this particular year, I had a group of kids that were really struggling with their sentence structure. So in this term four, we just nailed in on sentence structure quite a few times during the week, which in another cohort I would have. So you really have to create these timetables based on what your kids' needs are and what's going on in the school. So I had my two hours of R F F I built in here, so I have, for my class, that was first thing on Tuesday morning and first thing Thursday morning. So another teacher would come in and teach my class during that time, which is fantastic that I got those two hours, but you know, a lot you can get done in two hours, particularly if you've had a duty on in the morning before that and a child's had an issue. So sometimes they're, you know, the kids are kids, they have squabbles on the playground. It might take 15, 20 minutes of class time to sort out these two children and why they're having an issue.
Can you give me an estimation of during a week, how much teaching time you would lose to things like disruptive behaviour on the playground or...
How long is a piece of string? It depends on the kids, the space they have available. In, I've taught at a few schools, I've found that there are more issues in schools where there is less space. And sometimes you have to say, the kids are right, we're going to go in, we're going to start our lesson, and you might have every single kid just sit down and drop everything and read. So for 10 minutes, you guys are going to drop everything and read, I can't teach you right now, because I'm going to deal with these two children who are still trying to, kind of having a bit of a blue between each other, and we need to sort that out before we can move on. It might be a case of sending the kids, saying, okay, I would like you to come and sit next door, with the teacher next door, you come and sit here, and in five minutes' time, once I've got the lesson going and everyone's on their work, I'm going to come back and get you, so that we can deal with it. Because if you don't deal with it at the time, you've lost your opportunity and your teaching opportunity for the kids.
Yeah, of course. Sorry, just, hello. Thank you very much for coming along. I just wanted to go back to that point on the I E Ps, where you said that often there's, it's just the teacher and the parents, sorry, developing that I E P without any support officer. I've got a lot of experience with I E Ps with my own children, and I know that it is during those processes, sitting with the learning support people, that we really sort of hone into exactly how we get the most out of the individual child and also how they are the least disruptive. So for instance, if, you know, there's flattening behaviour, or if somebody, if a child is getting overwhelmed by noise, there are, you know, obviously there are tricks as to how you can address that. It concerns me that there's not that experienced person there who knows about children.
It very much depends on the school. So every, most schools do have a learning support teacher, it depends on the size of the school. For the Hawkesbury, we have a lot of small schools that don't have their own learning support teachers, and it's a very limited pool of people that you can draw upon from the Nauribha office, which is where we feed from, to come out to your school.
So these I E Ps are being developed without S L S Os then? So there's no, and no kind of other...
Usually, we wouldn't have an S L S O, unless there's someone that the child is very attached to or works very extensively with the child. But we also can't guarantee that one S L S O will be working with that student throughout the year or from year to year?
Because it's a massive onus to put on a teacher. I can imagine, especially, you know, a graduate teacher who's coming in, has not had the experience of dealing with children who are a bit different.
No, definitely. And so in the case of our learning support teacher, she would be spending more of her time, we do have a learning support teacher at my school, she spends more of her time with those beginning teachers and the teachers who haven't got as much experience with it, so that they can get through that process. But you might have four, five in your class of 30 who need those plans, sometimes more. So getting through all the parent meetings that go with that takes a lot of time and scheduling, and making sure that we can get them either before school, after school, during the day. Sometimes parents are willing to engage in that process, and they're not. I'm very happy when they are, because you've learned so much more about the child and what strategies work for the parents at home, that you can adapt into the classroom.
And it strikes me that if you, it's probably just obvious, that if you've got that specialist support at the beginning, where somebody is able to sit with the teacher, the child, and parents and say, this is how you get the best out of this child, that that would then save a lot of time in terms of disruptions and all the rest of it that you get when someone isn't understood and having their behaviour managed properly.
Yeah, and sometimes, sometimes it comes from the other direction too, if the teacher has identified that there's things perhaps that the parents might not know about. So you also have to be, I guess, trained in having those sensitive conversations with parents. They're not easy conversations sometimes. Thank you.
Can I also ask about...
Yes, sorry. I was going to ask a clarifying question, but you go first.
I just wanted to ask about maintenance of accreditation. So this is 100 hours, 50 for teacher identified, 50 for registered. Have you done your 50 hours of registered accredited hours?
Not on my current cycle. So it is a five-year cycle, so I have gone through one already. I didn't find that too difficult, because I was involved in something called the, it was basically a leadership initiative from the department, it was a very helpful, a very helpful leadership initiative. It was an aspiring leaders program, and I got a lot of registered hours through that program. We do get our registered hours through registered courses, but there has been some confusion over the past four months about what's a registered course and what's not a registered course, and there were changes about how courses could become registered. And N E S A did attempt to address that with a credit of registered hours to teachers, and there was a credit to teachers about, to recognise the learning effort we all had to go through during the COVID lockdowns.
How much was that? How many hours were...
I think it was about 20, but I would have to check that. With the accreditation cycle, in theory, we have 100 hours that we have together, and we have four staff development days. And those four staff development days do add up to 20 hours, which does come to your 100 hours over the five years. The difficulty is, is if you're a part-time teacher, you might not be at every single one of those staff development days, but you are still required to get your certain amount of hours. You can get extensions from N E S A to your accreditation time if you are part-time, but it doesn't always marry up properly. And the professional learning that you get at your school may not necessarily all be registered.
Yeah, so I think that's kind of where I'm getting to. So in terms of your, the kind of recent experience, have the staff development days been dedicated to professional development that is registered?
At the moment, we're doing a non-registered professional development more, so all of our mandatory stuff, I'm hoping is registered, because the department has said that we need to do it, it's provided by the department.
This is the, like, the child protection, the... None of that's registered, we've got, that's been established.
Then it becomes difficult, because so much of your time is dedicated to the mandatory accreditation, the mandatory professional learning from the department. So some schools are very good and will very much seek out registered accreditation. If you are concerned about it, you go to your principal and say, look, I'm short hours, I need help, what professional learning can I do? And that's problematic in itself, because you're seeking professional learning, not necessarily because you have a need in your classroom or your students, but you have a need for your registration. So it's not necessarily the professional learning that you need, it's the professional learning you have to get, because it's what you can find.
Annie, have you found that you have to pay out of your own pocket for your professional learning to meet your hours?
I haven't, I know other teachers that have. I've just been very lucky, I think, in that I volunteer for an awful lot of stuff.
I'd just like to explore some of what you said in the first answer you gave around the work, what your workload was like. And I think the first thing I'd say is that when you become a foster parent to two children, that's an amazing thing, and I think, you know, we all would say thank you to you for doing that, because I think that's really important, and not enough people do that. So I think firsthand, I'd say, you know, congratulations, well done, thank you for that. When you were speaking about, obviously, being an assistant principal, and that the family impact that it was having, particularly with having two more children coming in to your family and your life, it meant that you, I guess, moved from that more senior position into the teaching role to sort of relieve some of that. And I remember you said that afterwards, that that still had an impact on the difficulties that you were having with trying to make everything work, the home-life balance. I guess, from one perspective, I'm looking at that and thinking that New South Wales Education is such a large entity, that it does allow people to transition between more demanding and less demanding roles, when they have impacts on their personal circumstances, like having family coming in. So that provides that flexibility for people to have that movement. But what, in the circumstances that you had, where you were, I guess, moving into just a teaching role, from being a assistant principal, what more would you have liked to have seen New South Wales Education do to assist you in that circumstance? And what would, I say, somebody who was outside of the education system, say, working in another role, perhaps maybe another frontline role like nursing, or even the private sector, in, say, working in a boutique location or a hospitality role? How would something that their employer would offer be different, do you think, to what is expected of you in that circumstance?
I was very, my circumstances were very different and into many. You do have the opportunity within a department, particularly now, because there is such a teacher shortage to move. So when I first started teaching, getting a temporary contract was difficult, let alone getting a permanent job. It was the ultimate epitome of everything you tried for, was to get permanency. Now, and it was competitive. If you wanted a temporary job, you would compete with other people, you would make sure you were the best, you would put an expression of interest, you would make sure that you apply, and you'd want, you'd fight to keep your job. My school was cold-calling people the week before school started, down on casual... down on casual list, saying, are you available to teach this term? Are you available to teach? We have a class, we have no teacher, are you available? So there's a lot more opportunity to move around because there's a lot more spaces at the moment. So I was very lucky in that sense that it was timing, I wouldn't think. And also that for me, I didn't have to have that financial burden. I wasn't dependent on my assistant principal income, um, which is a very lucky and fortunate situation to be in. A lot of people don't have that. So my hours went from, you know, as an assistant principal, I was working twelve-hour days plus more on weekends. If I got into school after seven o'clock in the morning, it was like, oh, Michelle's like, where is she? What's going on? Um, and that's not ideal, nobody should be working that hard. Um, in comparison to the private sector, um, and I have worked in the private sector before, I did have a life before being a teacher, which was very strange and distant now. When I left work and I got on the train to go home and I left the city, I left work. It was at, it was in the city and I was on my way home. I left it all there, I didn't bring it with me. I didn't pull out my laptop when I got home unless it was for my own enjoyment, something I wanted to research, something I was studying, um, or I just wanted to watch some TV. Uh, I, I don't see in teaching that you get that opportunity to just leave your work at work and come home. When you are preparing for your little, your little people, even when you have your programme, you know, a programme document. I wonder if I have one here. We create our programme documents with the best of intentions. Um, sometimes my programme documents just have written on them, that didn't work. And I have to go back that night and try again and write a whole new lesson because the one I wrote did not suit my students and it didn't work for us in the classroom. I learnt, that was no good. It worked on last year's lot, it was no good for this year's lot. So that night, I've got home, I'll create a whole new lesson. I'll make sure I have the resources created for it. There will be cutting, there will be pasting, there will be laminating, there will be clipping things on the computer. I want to make things as engaging as I can for my kids. And then it comes a point where you know that you can still do things to make it better. You have to cut yourself off and say, this is at the good enough point because now I need sleep, I need to give my children dinner, I need to give them baths, I need bed, we need store time. And then sometimes I'll go back to it after that until I need to go to bed. Because when, when is enough? When is a lesson good enough? That's, that's a real question for all teachers. Like, when is it enough? And when do we say, this is the best that I can possibly put together for these kids? Because that's what we want. We want to put together the best lessons we can for the best learning possible for kids. So I'd say it's very different from the private sector jobs I've had because I don't just work there, I live being a teacher.
I know certainly some of the, I guess, roles I've had outside of, um, the one that I have now, um, there are some where I've perhaps worked and then walked away and not thought about it until I had to go back. I know that for many of us now, there's other roles that we do that are much more, I guess, immersive into our lives. And there, I think we all have that challenge of where we, um, cut it, you know, cut it off and, and prioritise working family time. What's the balance between, I guess, the perfection that your, um, you clearly like to, you know, I can, I can see it in the way that you've, um, you articulate your responses, that you have versus, um, uh, what is, um, like, your question says, what is enough? Like, how, how do you find that balance?
Trial and error, um, experience. Uh, you get better at it as you, um, go through being a teacher. I mean, there are still times now where I'll be like, okay, I've got year six tomorrow, last year's, last week's lesson didn't work. I've been straining my brain all week, I just got nothing. All right, let's see what, you know, you, you might find some resources on the internet, you find some resources you've used before, you go through the library and find something new. The enough is when you feel like you're getting somewhere with the kids, when you feel like their learning is progressing. And sometimes that can be more challenging than other times. There are so many things going on in schools that are beyond the learning. I, I don't know if anybody has brought this to your attention, but a big problem for schools right now is vapes. So we spend a lot of time, um, what would have been a literacy lesson, but we've had a vape issue in the past week more than-
Primary school?
Primary school, where several kids have bought vapes to school. So instead of doing a literacy lesson, we'll actually be having a lesson on smoking and vaping and, and the dangers of that because the need for our students is actually more important for their wellbeing, to be healthy, um, and to understand that this is not a great thing to do than for me to teach them about, um, a particular text that I had planned. And that's a real juggling act for everybody. I mean, are, there are times when I have actually abandoned my lesson and given my kids a lesson on the importance of sleep, what not having sleep does to our body because the kids are coming to school so tired because they've been up gaming the night before. And so we're, obviously, their parents may not know that they're gaming. Um, kids are very good at taking their devices to bed with them and waiting till their parents go to sleep. They tell us, which is wonderful, but, um, I'm like, okay, we might have to have a discussion with mum and dad. But it means that we need to teach these children as they get older, particularly as they get into year five and six and they're heading towards high school, that you have to be a bit more, more involved in regulating yourself and making sure you get sleep or that you get water or that you don't touch a vape.
And I think that's probably the, um, the impact that you have on their lives is that, you know, you're obviously, um, important to them and they're a role model in effect. Like, you, you are that person to them that they feel like they can share it with you that perhaps, you know, it, and I think that's important to have for their, the students to have that, uh, in their lives. And so that is, that is important.
Yeah, sorry, just on that, um, I think sometimes there's criticism, and we heard some criticism yesterday, um, uh, from one of the, from the, the Czech who's not here today, um, about the idea of, I guess, there being a lot of teachers' work being focused on things that are not strict kind of academics. Um, and that somehow this is a waste of, of teachers', um, time. But if you're trying to get the best academically out of your children, then I guess you do need to talk about things like gaming and vapes and the amount of sleep.
Absolutely, and it is actually about the syllabus. It's in the PDHPE syllabus, teaching the kids about healthy living and healthy lifestyles. Um, smoking is identified within the syllabus as being an issue. Screen time is identified as an issue. They're not things that we're pulling out of the nowhere. I guess the PDHPE syllabus actually has a lot of these life outcomes in it that, um, don't get as much attention because we are very focused on literacy and numeracy. Um, and we will try and, and find ways of bringing incorporating literacy and numeracy into those lessons. You know, we might write a text about, about that particular thing and obviously that text will get marked, they'll get feedback. So we're using our skills, we're upskilling ourselves in those literacy outcomes, but the, the, the value of the health outcome is really important.
Do you think we're too focused on literacy and numeracy in the system?
I think literacy and numeracy is important, but we also need to have time for other things. I really value giving the kids time for drama and dance and music and creativity because there's so much more that they can find to express themselves. We've got thirteen years of school to get there. It's a long journey and I, I like to tell teachers that it's not a sprint. We are here on a marathon and we've got to get these kids right through the whole journey. Um, and at the end of that journey, they're expected to either head off into university or TAFE or some sort of other vocational education, um, or enter the workforce. And we want them to be complete humans when they get there. We don't want them to be partially formed humans. So I think school, and if you look at the values for public education, they very much are about the whole time.
Ms. McDonald had a question, I'll just go and tell about her.
Can I just ask a quick follow-up? Just in terms of, uh,
What if I said no?
Art and music, uh, how many hours are mandated for art and music?
Um, well, it's the same for, as the geography history component, same as the, um, PDH component, um, and same as science. So in theory, we're trying to get them to about two hours a week. The only way to get that to happen is to integrate my subjects together. So my timetable here, it's only got one hour a week, it's just Friday afternoon. Um, so I'll have to take opportunities during English when we're using a text to maybe act out that text or, um, during geography and history to do some artwork around that thing that we're studying. We have to put our subjects together in primary. Um, it's not as clear cut of this is your geography time, go to your geography teacher as in a high school. And the only way to get our hours is to kind of smush them all together. That's why we often work on percentage of time as opposed to this many hours. So we have our lovely pie chart, I hope, I hope you've seen the pie chart of time breakdown. It's, it's available, um, through NESA and through the department website, but we, we do our very best to accommodate those times. And sometimes we might spend a term on one subject, but we might have one, one term will spend more time on creative arts and the next term we'll spend more time on science so that we can get quality of time and decent projects done during that time. So we average it out over the year sometimes.
Um, I'll ask Ms. McDonald to ask the last question and, um-
Okay, thank you. Um, and I'm sure everyone here today can recall back when they went to school, a teacher that made a memorable impression and I'm sure that you, you are doing that with the children, that, um, students that you face today. I just wondered if you'd had a chance to, and you probably haven't, um, read the, uh, a report that was handed down into, um, teacher shortages for last year. And there were twenty recommendations. And I wondered if any of those resonated with you if you'd had a chance to read it?
Um, I have. Uh, for me, I guess, teacher shortages is really, really personal for me at my school. We have been so short on teachers. I mean, the fact that we're cold calling teachers down a list to please come and take a class is enormous. One of the things that I've found difficult is, uh, I guess, lowering the, the expectation for a complete teacher. At the moment, we're now taking teachers who haven't finished all their pracs, so they're university students coming into school. It's actually quite difficult because if you come as a, a teacher to, to school, a graduate who has finished, um, and you've been employed on a contract or permanently, you get beginning teacher time release and you get a second mentor and there's time for you and the mentor to work together. These university students aren't allocated that same funding and they're coming in without that. But we have a, a burden to help them because they don't, they're not, they're not cooked, essentially, they're still, they're still going. So our more experienced teachers in the school have to pick up that burden and helping them and making sure that they're okay. They don't have the experience dealing with student behaviours, they don't have the experience dealing with the curriculum. Um, they need help from us. And so that's more work that we take out of hour and time and bring that over to the person because we, we want to work collegially. We have to support each other to make our school run. I think that, um, I think that teacher shortages, um, are not just teacher shortages too. I also think that there are also, um, school councillor shortages for us as well. So, um, if we can get enough teachers in the system, then we can train those to be school councillors as well. But at the moment, we're so short on teachers that I don't want any of my colleagues to say the word, I'm going to retrain as a school councillor because then I've lost another teacher. But I need school councillors. Uh, so it's, it's really, it's really quite difficult. At my school and I guess in the entire, um, team that my school sits in for school councillors, which are different to our directorate, um, there's not one single school who's got their actual allocation of school councillors. So if teachers do that, I'm scared.
Ms. Moore, I wanted to say thank you for-
Yeah, sorry. I had another question to add on to that, sorry.
Right.
I've got ten more minutes.
It was just to do with, um, what's my trying to thought? Sorry. Oh, you said about, you know, you don't have time to switch off sometimes. And I was wondering about your work-life balance. Um, and also, and you said, it, it's, it's not just a teacher shortage. It, it's, what is the workplace culture like within, like, say, over the last ten years? Because we see in other workplaces, there's quiet, what they call term quiet, quiet quitting. But we heard yesterday that there are more resignations than retirements in, um, so it, it is, it is bigger than just being teacher shortages. So there's a few different factors there, so.
The workload is huge. Um, it, it does burn you out if you keep going. I, I myself experienced hitting that point. I don't think teachers want to leave teaching. They're passionate about their students, but you have to make some big decisions. At my school, we have a very good culture of, of supporting each other, but it doesn't mean that we're not very tired. So teachers, we support each other and work with each other and try and make sure that we can make it through. But it's unfair, a lot of teachers, it gets to the point where they can't keep pushing through. And you don't want to give, um, half a job. You want to give your full effort to these kids because when you're standing there in front of those kids, you can't give half a job. I couldn't. There, we, teachers are teachers because we have a moral obligation to them, so we can't give them half of anything. One of the, the hardest, absolute hardest things of being a teacher at the moment is when we have to split our kids and not teach them. So on any given day, if we can't find casual teachers, we will use up, we've had Covid support teachers, we'll put them on class. We have assistant principals for curriculum instruction, we'll put them on class. And sometimes we still have run out of teachers, so we'll have to split a class, or two. And that means all my principals taking two or three classes in the library herself. We will split kids across the school, so you'll send three or four to that class, three or four to that class until they're all split out with a little workbook of sheets. And when you're the teacher who they've come into, um, it's really hard because you, you want to make, make sure that they're looked after. You supervise them, you make sure that they're safe, um, but you can't provide them any feedback on the work they've been given. You can't provide them with, um, much guidance at all because you're busy worrying about the lesson and the kids that you've got here, the thirty of them sitting in front of you expecting you to help them with their content. You, you're only one person. And that was happening gosh near every day at my school last year. Um, and we were one of the lucky ones. One of the local high schools actually ended up having to borrow our, some of our staff just to cover minimal supervision where five classes were at once in the quad, in a high school. And that's, that's devastating for all of us because we know during that time, they don't get the opportunity to learn. They're denied learning, they're denied a teacher. They could have come from all different classes. So sometimes I'll be sitting there teaching a year five and six class and there's some kindergarten kids right there. Um, and there's not much you can do to help them other than make sure that they are safe, they are looked after and they're occupied.
I'll give it a second go, Mr. Everyone's-
Go and go and go.
Thank you for appearing today. As I mentioned in the opening statement, um, the committee has resolved that there is insufficient time for supplementary questions. So, um, if, um, when we provide you the transcript of evidence, um, if you could provide any, um, clarifications within twenty-four hours, uh, it would be much appreciated. We'll now just take a very quick break while we switch, uh, the witnesses over. Thank you so much. Is that Sega? I do have Sega.
Thank you so much.
Sorry. Two minutes to go. Hey, how you doing? We'll just give you a few seconds here, comfortable and everything else and then-
Don't stand for the affirmation.
No, 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 no.
Sit down, make yourself comfortable.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Is that, um, was that your order this?
Yes, this one's mine.
Okay, cool. Is everyone set to, to set broadcasting? We've got it for all broadcasters, thank you. Uh, well, I'll now welcome our next witness. Um, for the record, you please state your name and position title and swear either an oath or affirmation.
Yep, David Towson. I'm an assistant secretary with the Independent Education Union of Australia, New South Wales ACT branch. Um, I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much, Mr. Towson. Um, could I invite you to make, uh, a short opening statement if you'd like? And if so, if you just keep it to know more than a couple of minutes, it would be much appreciated.
Absolutely. Absolutely. All right. I was a secondary school teacher for approximately 17 years and am now in my 19th year of employment with the Independent Education Union. I know that you received evidence from the I U secretary, Mark Northam, in 2022, and my fellow Assistant Secretary Veronica Udall yesterday in Camden. While welcoming the opportunity to represent the issues facing our members in non-government schools, and so to spare this committee from needless repetition, I'll endeavour to keep my evidence specific to North West Sydney. And if you're interested, I organise in North West, New South Wales. So Walke, Weewarr, Armidale, Tamworth, Moree, that area. So that's my statement.
Thank you very much. I'll now invite questions from the committee, and I'll start with the opposition.
Thanks very much, Mr. Towson, for your appearance today. We did hear from one of your colleagues yesterday, and we have heard from Mark previously as well. But we're really interested to hear, this inquiry is really about getting an update about the teacher shortages and what's the status. And I appreciate, I think we're day five back for teachers today, but I'd be interested to hear, what's your kind of feedback, particularly across the North West region, sorry, across the North West of Sydney, but also the North West region in terms of the teacher shortages and the effects that it's having on our schools?
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Mrs. Hoss. There's 80 schools in the Parramatta diocese. And then, of course, there's independent schools. It's hard to determine exactly how many vacancies exist in independent schools. They often advertise through employment agencies. But through the diocese of Parramatta, they're currently advertising 58 jobs on their system website three days ago. That was the first day of school. Like, it's much more than usual. There's 23 high school teaching jobs being advertised, eight primary school teaching jobs being advertised, 11 school administration jobs, teachers' aides and the like, and 16 jobs at the Parramatta office, support staff and the like there. I've spoken to a principal member at a large secondary school in the Parramatta diocese, who, following conversations with his colleagues, believe that there are more like 200 teaching jobs not filled across the diocese. He described his Christmas break, one of constant recruitment, trying to fill the gaps in his school. He said other principals were experiencing the same. He told me that over the last few years, he's been unable to provide the support for beginning teachers that has negotiated in our work practices agreement. They're not getting the release time, early career teachers, nor are their supervisors or mentors. Now, that's quite an admission for a principal to make. But we understand that that's the case. We hear from our members. Once in the Parramatta diocese, they provide release in, or they should provide release in years one and two of a teacher's career, and it's not happening. They don't have the resources to do so. Similarly, the provision of professional development is being hampered. So these beginning teachers are not being supported into the profession, and we're at risk of failing them and losing them. He did mention also that, he said, this is not an answer to the teacher shortage crisis. But in getting, we've always had teachers come from overseas, and many Australian teachers go and teach overseas. But he says that while we're out there recruiting them overseas and agencies are recruiting, they can't start their process for accreditation until they land in New South Wales. And getting you working with Children's Check and NESA accreditation to be able to be employed could take up to 28 days. And he said that that could be streamlined to help fill some plugs, fill some gaps, sorry. On the question of incentives, he said that North West Sydney is not particularly attractive in terms of recruiting people. He said that in regional and rural parts of New South Wales, there are big financial incentives. But they don't offer them here in North Sydney. And he said, we're not on the coast, and we don't offer incentives. We're in a tight patch here in North Sydney. I did look, he also mentioned, and we've heard this from other schools too, that first and second year out, teaching senior classes, that didn't happen in my day of teaching. You sort of had to earn your stripes before you could take a senior class. You've got to think, some of these teachers have not become accredited, and they're already teaching senior classes. And some of them in their second and third year of teaching are appointed as coordinators without really the experience again. So it's a lot being put on top of these beginning teachers. And I'm sure you've heard that so many teachers are teaching outside their subject areas. Traditionally, chemistry, maths, TAS, have long time been hard to staff. But in an area where we're decrying skills shortages, TAS remains critically undersupplied. And here is, there are some areas that there was once a glut, and they can't attract applicants. For example, PDHPE, we're advised not to study PDHPE because there were that many teachers. And now there are that many vacancies existing in that area. And English too. There was never a shortage of English teachers in the past. I did a quick search of SEEK last night. I typed in teacher, and Parramatta and Western suburbs was a region that I could select. I only got to page six. There were 20 pages with 398 jobs being advertised. Now, again, this is the first week of the school year. That might not be unusual towards the end of term three or at the beginning of term four, but it is not normal at the beginning of a school year. A lot of those jobs, and I don't think it's within the terms of reference of this committee, were in early childhood centres, but we represent early childhood teachers. And it's obviously a critical part of the whole approach to education. So it's a broader issue with respect to teacher shortages in that area. Of some of the independent schools in this area, William Clark College at Kellyville had a PDHPE job on their website. Richard Johnson Anglican at Oakhurst is advertising for a primary teacher, a PDHP teacher, and three teachers' aides. North West Christian College at Riverstone is advertising for a HESI teacher with an immediate start. Tindale Christian School in Blacktown is also advertising for a HESI teacher and a PDHPE teacher. Our Lady of Mercy School in North Parramatta, a Catholic independent school, is advertising for a permanent and part-time religious education teacher, as well as a deputy principal. These are good schools. Our members at these schools would say they're great schools. And many of those will pay higher salaries than they do in the department and in Catholic systemic schools. So it's a problem. It would not be so extraordinary except for the fact that it's the beginning of the school year.
Absolutely. And I really appreciate the time that you've taken, Mr. Towson, to give us that update and to have those conversations. That's really helpful for us. We certainly heard from Angelo Gabriel Ados yesterday about how, in his experience, that this is the worst that he's ever seen. And that it's getting worse, that it's not getting better. I think particularly the examples you gave us of English and P A, that's particularly important. I have to say, I'd be interested, you know, your history, oh, sorry, your experience across North Western Sydney and then Northwest. The teacher shortages are something that we used to think, you know, it might happen in a rural regional area, particularly remote parts of the state like that. But now it's actually happening across large parts of Sydney. Is that your experience?
Yes. And if you're specific to the Northwest, I don't think anyone would be surprised that it's hard to staff places in remote places like Walgett and Mungandai and the like. The diocese of Armidale, the Catholic diocese up there, they have 24 schools. And they are doing, I think, a good job. They tell me that they'd rather have the problem of being overstaffed at the moment than understaffed. And they are, so from our perspective, our members up there are being offered permanent appointments to make sure that they can attract people there. But those areas, you know, as I said, they've often struggled to attract people. But what is extraordinary in towns such as Tamworth and Armidale, it is getting more difficult to staff those schools in rather desirable country towns.
Yeah, absolutely. And this is certainly not where it was historically. We heard from your colleague, Veronica, yesterday about the early teacher support, which was a fantastic idea. Certainly something that this committee has talked a lot about, the need for more support for early teachers. I would be really concerned about the fact that they're not actually able to get that. And that admission for a principal is fairly telling. I wanted to ask you about, you kind of touched on it. Teacher shortages really did make life really difficult for teachers, but they're having a really significant impact on students. You talked about how the early teachers teaching HSC subjects is a big step up for a new graduate. What is your experience of things like minimal supervision or merged classes or things like that across the schools that you look after?
Well, last year, we were getting calls, filling calls throughout the year from everywhere that that was happening. You know, I think at the moment, given it's the start of the year, teachers usually go back, like excited schoolchildren sometimes with anticipation that the year's going to start well. From the members I'm hearing from, there is a sense of foreboding, a sense that what's going to happen when we come up into the flu season again, when there's no casual teachers available. They've moved nap plan forward. There's a sense, do we have time to do what we would ordinarily do in terms of preparing for nap plan? So, you know, they're obviously very concerned for their students. Yeah, sorry.
No, no, that's fine. Look, I've just got one final question. And that's, again, from Angelo spoke about yesterday, the fact that in the public sector, resignation is around stripping retirement. So while we used to think that we had this kind of demographic issue approaching at some point in the future, what we're actually seeing is teachers who are leaving the teaching profession in greater numbers than those who are retiring. Is that your experience in the independent sector?
Look, it's hard to find evidence, but that's certainly what we're hearing anecdotally. People looking forward to bringing forward their retirement. Up in the Northwest, I should also, and if I could just go back to the other thing concerning teachers at the moment, is that there's a new national curriculum coming in, and the timeframe to implement that is very tight. And that's on top of all these other pressures. So that's a concern. Up in the Northwest, people are looking across the border at moving to Queensland, where teachers have been offered pay increases of 4%, 4% and 3%. We're approaching nothing like that. And my colleagues up in the Queensland branch of our union will say, that's a great start. On top of that, they've been offered a cost of living allowance on top of the 4, 4 and 3 of up to 3% per annum. So the money is there in Queensland. And my colleagues up there are saying they still need to address the other side of the coin, which is teacher workloads. And no jurisdiction is adequately addressing that as far as we can tell. It's a problem nationwide.
Well, I wouldn't miss the opportunity to plug New South Wales Labour's policy that we will reduce the amount of workload by several hours. But that's my thing, my time-
Just copying the New South Wales Liberal and Nationals government policy?
Okay, we're not going to politicise this.
I want to come back to this question around TAS. Why is it that TAS is such a difficult area to staff?
It's a good question. I think people who have TAS skills are in high demand in building an industry, and they can earn a lot more money outside of the classroom. That would be my guess, but I haven't researched it.
And so in the independent sector, are they able to offer incentives that are over and above what's available in the Catholic and the state system to try and attract these skills into those schools?
Yeah, look, independent schools have at their disposal the ability. They do pay above. But independent schools don't have some of the supports that systemic schools do and the department does. They do not have work practices agreement regulating employment. But by and large, they will pay above, and it's really up to them whether they offer further incentives. We know that there are some certainly being offered, we're hearing about it. But they're not, they're at the discretion of the individual employer.
Can I ask about, I think my colleague sort of touched on this, but so is it your experience that the membership, the composition of the teaching workforce in the independent sector is starting to get younger and less experienced? Or do you think the balance has pretty much remained the same?
I think that the general average age of the teacher continues to climb. We're not attracting as many people into the profession. Yeah, I can't say that there is a noticeable increase in the number of young teachers, yeah.
Ms. Boyd?
Yeah, thank you. I guess, yeah, so just talking a lot about teachers. And obviously, as the witness said, previous witness said, when we're talking about shortages, we're actually talking about shortages across a bunch of different types of roles within schools. What does it look like in terms of the supports given to particularly children with disability within the independent sector? And is there also a shortage of S and Ss of people who can actually guide, I mean, ease and the rest of it?
Yeah, good question. There's a lot of shortages everywhere, and we represent both teachers and support staff. Some of the, again, up in Armidale, the diocese up there is trying to retrain teachers' aides to become teachers due to the teacher crisis. But of course, then that's a domino effect that we need for more teachers' aides and skilled teachers' aides. So in terms of supporting kids with learning difficulties, they're critical. Particularly in primary school, I think you note that the teachers and the teachers' aides work very well together in addressing student needs.
And is that a shortage of funding for those positions or a shortage of being able to fill those positions?
Being able to fill those positions.
Do you think that the reason for there being fewer people available for those positions is similar to the rest of the school workaholics? Are the same sorts of issues as, you know, we hear a lot about workload issues and curriculum changes and those sorts of issues when it comes to teachers? Is it the same sorts of things for support staff, or is there something else going on?
Yeah, I'll have to tie that on notice. I can't think of anything specific to, you know, there are staff shortages. You know, and when you look at the advertisements, they're needing people to fill holes everywhere. But why that is the case for support staff, I'm not sure. There are different pressures. They are working hard. One group of members called me from school up in the Armidale diocese. They're being asked to, this was only yesterday, they are being asked to do playground duties, where in the past they hadn't done it. And that's because they don't have sufficient teachers who are already up to their full loads. And there's a certain level of anxiety. Not all of them are comfortable in doing that. They haven't received any training. We have an agreement with the diocese that they are to be trained, that they're doing to do it on a voluntary basis. A lot of them would be happy to do it if they know what the procedures are for an incident in the playground, for example. But you can't just tell someone to go and be on playground duty and expect that they're going to be perfectly comfortable and know what to do in the event that there's an issue.
Further questions from them? Do you have any more? I've got just a few. Thank you for appearing today. I guess I'm looking at this issue through a couple of lenses, and I'm listening to the evidence that's being presented. And I'm also, I guess, applying a view of what would people outside of the teaching profession see in here when they see the evidence that's being presented? I think everybody who has worked in any position or role in recent times, especially through what we've experienced over the last couple of years with the pandemic, understands that there have been changes or adoptions to the way that roles have been worked and the way that employers have asked their employees to adapt. So in some ways, I think everybody has had to be, have a level of flexibility in the way that they approach their roles. Do you think that that has been unreasonable, that employers have sought that flexibility? I.e., you know, people being asked to do playground duty when they may not have done it before? If the employer is prepared to assist with the training or the information that's required, isn't it really incumbent on people to actually understand that there is sometimes that flexibility required in our roles? It's certainly, I think, expected of people in the private sector in other, you know, positions away from teaching. Isn't it sort of reasonable here?
Yeah, and I'd like to, all I know for a fact that our members are extraordinarily flexible in answering their needs. They're not resistant to change, and the support staff I referred to are prepared to do it, but they want to know, what do I do in, what is the chain of command here if there's an incident? And there is, you know, no one's objecting to do, they're doing it every day. They're doing it extra and beyond. And the changing nature of the job, it's happened everywhere. I can tell you that I finished teaching in 2004. My daughter completed a HSC two years ago. I remember her talking to me on a Sunday, saying, teacher has just emailed me a response to, you know, an essay that she had written. And I said, when? She said, today. Now, as a parent, I was absolutely grateful that the teacher is giving up these Sundays to work with my daughter. As a unionist, I was absolutely horrified. Where is the work-life balance for these people? If, you know, there's a class of 20-odd people, you know, that they might be responding to back and forth over the course of the weekend. So- So, look, there certainly are flexibilities and people have picked up and run with those, but it's burning people out. And unless people, the point I was making is not to oppose change or it's, people need to be supported when there is a change.
I'll resist the urge to dive in on the unionist versus the parent issue because I think that would be too easy for me and I'll also, I'll park that one. But I guess the idea that playground duty is, I guess, a complex and difficult re-tasking of somebody, which is, I guess, the way that I interpreted your answer when you first gave it around, you know, addressing it as a highlighting an issue. In reality, I suspect that it is probably not that difficult to task. So I'm, when you're talking about, when you're talking about, you know, chain of command, I would think that's pretty, pretty simple. If not, it could be certainly answered within about two or three seconds with, you know, asking somebody, you know, who's in, you know, in a senior role. I suspect that, you know, there'll be things like, you know, the appropriateness of flow charts of what would happen in an event, which I'm sure are available. In reality, is there a need for those teachers aides to call you and discuss the issue with you and then have that to and fro? Isn't that making what is a really simple, you know, yes or no answer? You know, can you do this and here's the information? Making it much more complex and I guess touching, I said I wouldn't touch it, but isn't that sort of that unionised sort of, I guess, mentality that goes over the top of what is in effect quite a simple task?
I don't know if it's as simple as you might be presuming.
But is it as hard as you presume it to be?
Well, I'd say, under the terms of our agreements made with the employers, there is an obligation on the employer to consult when there's a significant change. And that's all we're asking for, that these people be given the confidence and skills in order to do their job. That's what they're asking for. There's also an industrial implication here. Depending on where they're classified on the pay scale, they can only be required to do it if they're paid the level four. Now, if they're not being paid that, they should not be, you know, being asked to do tasks above their pay grade. So, you know, like, they have not asked me for intervention, they asked for advice and they're going to speak to their principal about it. It's not an issue. It's certainly a wise thing, I think, for people to contact their union and know the parameters of their role and what supports they might get in that role. But yeah, look, they're not, it's not a task that's beyond them, but they need to have the confidence and the skills in order to complete that task. And they deserve, you know, the respect and their entitlement to be consulted on those things.
I don't think anyone's denying that they deserve the respect or, you know, would not thank them for the work. But I just think there needs to be some level of common sense applied to a lot of this stuff. And that, to me, just sounds like it's a much more complex scenario than it really needs to be. But I'll just turn to Mr De Adam.
I want to just come back to your comment about the email on the Sunday. I think Mr Gavrellatus yesterday flagged the idea about the right to switch off. And I wanted to see what your views were about that idea that, you know, we should be taking a more, sort of stronger regulatory approach to enabling employees basically not to be contacted over the weekend. And I think the sort of follow-on from that is, how do we, how do we stop teachers from working in their own time? Like, this is sort of, there's a culture there, there's a sort of, I suppose, there's the kind of moral kind of commitment to their students that drives teachers to go above and beyond and basically allow their private time to be consumed by their work. How do we, how do we get around that cultural problem and the right to switch off question as well?
I think you're correct, it is a cultural problem. There are agreements made with the employers and most of them have sensible email policies. There is no obligation, there's no requirement for teachers to respond on the weekends. But there's an expectation from parents. And if one teacher's doing it, but my child's in the other class where the teacher is not responding to emails on the weekend, I want that teacher who is, you know, that's the, that's part of the cultural thing. So they, you know, I think it's something that teachers have to address themselves along with the principals and ensure that expectations are not unreasonable. And they do need to reclaim some of their time back, that's correct. But in terms of, it's not a requirement and I'm not blaming the employers by any stretch in respect to that. It's just one of those things that has changed as technology's changed and expectations have increased.
Do we have any further questions? If not, it being midday, it's probably a good time to say, well, thank you very much for appearing today. Now, as you may have heard, we've got such a short timeframe with this inquiry that there's insufficient time for us to put supplementary questions to you. So where we will provide you a copy of the transcript, we'd ask that you provide any clarifications to us within 24 hours so that we can generate the report at the end of this. But thank you for appearing today and we'll now break for lunch and I believe we're returning now.
One o'clock?
One PM.
Thanks, Mr Feen, thanks.
Thank you, thanks very much.
Well, thank you for returning for the afternoon session, it being one o'clock. I'll now invite the next witness. If you could please state your name and position, title and swear either an oath or affirmation, thank you.
My name is Libby Clark. I'm the Vice President of Marsden Park Public School. And the affirmation, it's actually pretty big, I should be able to read it. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. And can I invite you to make a opening statement if you'd like? And if you would like to, I'd ask you to keep it to no more than a couple of minutes.
Sure. I have three boys. They have just started year five, year two and my youngest starts kindergarten tomorrow. I don't know whether I'm happy or sad about that. I am also the daughter of a retired primary school principal. So, you know, grown up hearing all about how the department is run and this, that and the other. I've been involved with the P and C since my oldest was in kindergarten. It was a very small school, so there wasn't a lot of options. So I know this much about, you know, how things are handled as much as the P and C, you know, a parent is allowed to know. So my last appearance, when I talked about the review into school infrastructure, I was very passionate about that and I had firsthand information. My appearance today is mainly just completely from a parent's perspective. I obviously know the issues that are there. I don't have solutions, but yeah, my evidence today is purely just a parent's opinion.
Well, so we can get some of that evidence, I'll invite questions now and I'll ask the opposition, Ms Fissles.
Thanks very much, Mr Chair. Yes, well, you did give us great evidence last time, so thank you so much. I think, so this inquiry is into teacher shortages, but also their impact on students and education outcome. So I'd be really interested, you're obviously in, right in the heart of the North West here, in a part that's having huge amounts of population growth. What's your experience either, both as a parent and in the P and C? In terms of, are there enough teachers? Are teacher shortages impacting your kids' education?
I, yes, I truly believe the teacher shortages are impacting my boys. So my oldest is ten and my second child is just about to turn seven. They are very, very opposite ends of the scale when it comes to everything. My nine-year-old has some learning difficulties. He has dyscalculia, which I'd never heard of it prior to that. It's dyslexia for maths, basically. And he also has some receptive and expressive language delays. So he has intense tutoring to help him with this, but he's at that end of the scale where he has learning support and things like that. Whereas my seven-year-old doesn't try very hard, but he's very bright, which is very unfair. So he, so the opposite ends of the scale in the fact that one of my child's children, sorry, needs, you know, a lot of support, a lot of extra help and my older one, my middle one, sorry, needs someone to push him. So I don't know what the situation is at all the schools, but when our school doesn't have enough teachers and we are a small school, the classes are split and they have what's called their split book. And from what I've been told by teacher friends and it's referred to as busy work. It's spreadsheets, colouring in, simple tasks that they can do. When I say unsupervised, yes, there is a teacher there. There's nobody, you know, carrying on, throwing chairs and whatever. But the teacher is teaching their class, but also with a small school, my year five student, he might be split to a kindergarten class. You just don't know. It's where they can fit them. It's a wasted day. They come home and I say, what did you do today? Ah, we just worked in our split book. They didn't get anything out of the day. They almost would have been better to have the day off and I'll take them somewhere educational and give them a lesson myself. I work, so that's not going to happen. But what I'm saying is, it is a waste of a day. So when I've got somebody wanting to push my seven-year-old to be the best he can, that's frustrating, but especially my oldest son. He tries so hard and he just doesn't get there. And a wasted day for him is a real impact. And he can't work through some of the sheets they give him. He does need that extra help. So he probably sits there very quietly, so he doesn't draw attention to himself and just looks like he's doing work and gets nothing out of the day. So it is a wasted day.
So I hadn't heard of these before, these split books, but it actually came up with our, at our hearing yesterday from other parents, talking about how it seems to show that split classes and splitting up kids to other classes because they can't find teachers is so entrenched that they actually have a specific workbook or a specific program.
They had to put a program in place because it would be ideal to split them. So my, my middle son, Andrew, I should use that, my middle son, Andrew, he, the one-two composite classes that they have at the school are quite small. So he can be split to a one-two class and just follow on with the work. But obviously, last year, the three, four composites were full. So he was split to a grade outside of his own. Now, he was put in the lower grades, but he's not doing their work. So he was just working out of the book. And, you know, I mean, we all went to school. I remember when we were at school when you had a, what did they call them? A substitute teacher. Sometimes they didn't have control of the class like the normal teacher. We all went to school, we all know what I'm talking about. So these teachers have control of the class, but the children aren't getting any academic benefit out of it at all. I have three friends, actually, that are high school teachers. Now, personally, I'm only speaking from the primary school perspective, that's what I'm exposed to. But my high school friends have said that year eleven and twelve classes go unsupervised. A teacher goes in and says, you've got no one today, do whatever. And they go unsupervised. Now, I know they're getting towards being adults, but they're also teenagers and teenagers, you know, don't make the best decisions. And then my friends also say that they have to teach outside of their subject that they typically teach. And again, all of this is detrimental to the students. If you've got somebody teaching you something that they don't know anything about, you're not getting the best help. That's just a side note of the high schools. Like I said, my focus is primary school and they have to be supervised. You can't leave children twelve and under unsupervised. But it's just as bad in the high school system from what I'm told.
Yeah, and it means that the focus of the day goes from learning and education support to supervision or babysitting, which is a very
Just about supervision, yeah. There's no academic benefit to a split day at all.
And when you consider that, we actually, we just had a teacher appear before us before showing us how full the timetable is and how difficult it is to actually squeeze everything in, it actually shows us how much each child is losing each day that they miss out on that invaluable learning time.
Absolutely, my oldest often brings home a lot of his work. His teacher and I work quite closely and he brings home a lot of his work to show me. And the amount of work he can put together in a week, can't keep it always, you know. But yeah, one day of, you know, and you miss, you know, the key focus of the maths and the English. But, you know, also at a younger age, all the other subjects, the PA, the geography, the history, it's all just as important, they've got to learn it. And you know what it's like when your child has a day off sick and they've got to catch up. All these children are catching up when they have a split day.
One of the points that was made by a parent yesterday was, the department has quite a strict attendance policy and they actually will send you a letter if you miss more than one day per fortnight, talking about what the cumulative effect of that is on your schooling. But what we're actually seeing is the reverse, which is that the teachers can't be supplied. So it's obviously having an impact on
Absolutely, yes, yeah.
That's really helpful, thank you, I just passed time for leaks.
How frequently do you think the classes are being split?
I would say coming out of COVID was quite often. But it's a different world now, you get the tiniest of sniffle that you would have, and we'd all be the same, we all work, but the tiniest of sniffle before COVID, you'd work through it. You'd be sitting next to someone that had a full-blown cold. Now, you can't do it. So teachers are having more time off because you can't be seen at school blowing your nose constantly because, you know, everybody thinks COVID. So I would say it's a lot more now, post-COVID. I couldn't really put a finger, also, it depends on the teacher as well. I mean, like in your office, like teachers, certain people are prone to having more time off than others. So, but I would say, look, in a month, I would say my kids would have had one to two split days, maybe a little bit more here, maybe a little bit less there, but on average.
And so what about information from the school? How transparental are the school?
I don't know anything about it.
About how frequently this is occurring or do they, they don't notify parents when the class is split?
No, I pick my kids up from school, how was your day? Ah, we were split to class such and such. Oh, did you learn anything today? Ah, I did my split book.
You really, I mean, you're not, the school's not bringing the parent body into its confidence in terms of, you know, the difficulties that they're trying to manage?
No.
And explaining what's going on, why they've had to make these decisions, why they've chosen to take one approach over another in terms of managing absences?
Not that I recall. There may have been something very early in the piece, but I can't recall there ever being any advice about what their policy, if you like, was on teachers not being there.
Could I ask you in that case, and what, if you were to be given information, what is it as a parent you would expect that the school would provide to you around that? And how would, how would that change your approach?
Look, if I received a notification through our school app, you know, at seven thirty, eight o'clock in the morning, that one of my boy's teachers wasn't available and the class was going to be split, I don't know what I would do about it. I'm not going to take the day off work and keep them home. I don't think it would make a difference to me if they notified me that their teacher wasn't going to be there, honestly. And I think for a lot of parents, it probably wouldn't make a difference.
I think that was sort of the point I was getting to.
Yeah, and you're right, and that's probably why they don't do it. Because there's nothing I can do about it.
There's no detrimental impact really, like whether
As a parent?
Yes, no.
I know that when I drop them off at school, whatever teacher they have, be it their teacher or another teacher, they are safe. Are they learning? Perhaps not, but they're safe and that's what you want for your children.
Could I ask?
No, no, you go. Could I ask if, I'm curious as to what, you know, parents as a whole think is going on. So, you know, from our perspective, we're looking at this very much from policy and what's going on in terms of drivers of teacher shortages and what the solutions are. But from a parent's perspective, what do, what do you think most parents think the problem is? Where are they, when they hear that there's not teachers for their kids' classes? I think maybe the school or the government or the teachers or what do you think?
I don't know. One of my boys has quite a young teacher. She's only, my oldest son had her her first year out. She is fantastic. She is, when they do activities at the school, Easter hat parade, that kind of thing, she's the life of the party. She runs the whole thing, she's fantastic. I'm gathering that she's about to take some considerable time off this year. I don't know whether it's burnout, only being in the job for a few years. I wonder if the teachers, the young teachers that want to go into teaching, what I've heard some of them say is, it's not what they expected. They think they're going to go into a class full of thirty lovely children and they're going to teach. And then you get that one child that unfortunately can disrupt the entire class and they spend so much of their time dealing with, you know, issues with children. My understanding is there's a lot of administrative work these days and I think they're not enjoying their teaching as much.
And then on top of that, do you think that they're getting the blame from parents and the community? Or do you think that that blame is going more towards?
Our community, and again, just my school, is very supportive of our teachers. They are wonderful. The children, you know, apart from the split days, they don't go without. We have all the, you know, the Easter hat parades, the Christmas concerts, all that kind of stuff. But we also have a very high staff turnover. Teachers come and go, change schools, leave teaching altogether. And as a parent, I don't know what it's like. You know, you can assume, being a government employee, they're earning enough money, you know, nobody's earning enough money, but, you know, it could be that. If you're looking for solutions, I mean, you can pay someone as much as you want, but if they you can pay someone as much as you want, but if they don't enter the door, they're not going to stick at it.
Do you have any sense of how many teachers in the school are permanent or how many are temporary?
I have a very vague idea. We have very limited permanent teachers. We have a lot of teachers that are on, I, I don't know the correct wording, but, um,
Temporary contracts.
Temporary type teachers. We have very few permanent teachers. I, I don't know why that is. Um, at the P and C meetings, we're generally advised, oh, a permanent position has been awarded to this teacher. And I'll sit down and say, I didn't know they weren't permanent. So I, I don't know enough about that to comment on it.
Do you think you've observed, um, teachers, uh, or i- is there sort of, uh, perhaps as a result of the staffing issue, uh, a sense that teachers are a bit frazzled, that they are feeling pressured, under stress?
Yeah, if you're going back to the, the temporary thing, job stability is a big thing for everybody. So if they know their position is temporary and, you know, the school loses five students to the local Catholic school or something like that, their position could be gone. So, you know, that would force them to perhaps look around for a permanent position. So yeah, that goes to job stability. Um, I know the one thing that as a parent, and it's, it's awkward to say because I feel silly saying it, but teachers' aides are so, so helpful because going back to talking about my oldest son that has his learning difficulties, if he doesn't understand a task and he has to ask the teacher a question and she has to take time away from the class to specifically explain it to him in a way he understands. Or if you have a child with behavioural issues, they take away from the class. The teacher's aide can step in, help those teachers with that, and then they can continue teaching the class. I know that those issues, children with learning support needs and children with behavioural issues, really take a toll on teachers. Really, really take a toll. So more support for the teachers, be it a teacher's aide or another way, I think every teacher would appreciate an extra set of hands in their classroom.
Thank you. Um, the question, Danam is, uh, Alan McDonald. Uh, sorry, Don, about Alan McDonald.
Thank you. Um, I was just gonna ask, do you think that parents have high expectations of teaching staff so that they're not allowed to switch on or?
Yes. I mean, you, everybody should have high expectations of their teacher. I think there is a sliding scale. One of my boys, one year, had a teacher whose heart wasn't in it. And I begrudgingly complained to the school. There was nothing they could do about it. It was during COVID, so. But I have described that year of my child's education as a waste of time. She didn't have her heart in it and it showed.
And do you, at the start of the, or commencement of the school year, would a teacher set out expectations and then, or is that a parent-teacher interview situation? Or how do you know what the role of, of the educator is and, um, you know, because you're working full-time, so you don't want to be sort of doing that role as well. How, how do you know what the teacher expects?
The way our school does it is the children are in their classes from last year, this first week, and then next week, waiting on new enrolments, et cetera, because we're in a, obviously a, a high-growth area, people moving into houses every five minutes. Um, what, sorry, they go into their new classes next week. Um, parents are just as interested as children to hear who the teacher's going to be because, you know, you have the teachers that you'd, you'd like. Um, we do a meet the teacher afternoon where it's just, everybody can, we just have an afternoon tea. The P and C run it. We run an afternoon tea after school, an afternoon that you can just, um, put a face to the name of your teacher. Um, but it's no, it's a five-minute chat face-to-face, standing up. It's nothing official. And our school doesn't host parent-teacher interviews until the end of term two. Unless of course, I obviously work a lot closer with my oldest son's teacher with his learning difficulties. So the option is there if you want to work very closely with the teacher. If your child doesn't need that, you're not really going to get a face-to-face till reports go out at the end of term two. So there is no, um, fact sheet information to anything put out as to what the teacher is planning or expecting for the first or second semester.
Do you think you should get something like that?
Perhaps in high school. I don't know in primary school if it would be as effective. I'm, you know, if, for instance, my kindergarten son, they're going to learn to count to thirty, they're going to learn all the sounds of the alphabet. I mean, it's quite obvious for his age, but then I, I worry with my older one, at what age is he going to get to homework where I sit there and go, ooh, I can't handle that? So, um, Google will be my best.
Thank you, Google. Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. Um, perhaps, but I mean, you know, if, if he's going to be learning something that I don't know a lot about, I'm not going to go and study it. I, I don't have the time for that. I'll deal with it when that time comes around. So putting out an information sheet or whatever you'd like to call it about what the expectations are for the year, I, yeah, I, I don't know as to what benefit that would be. And that, I mean, that's my personal opinion. Other parents may be very interested to see what it is and I just can't think what I would do with that information.
Do you mind if, uh,
Yeah, of course.
Just today, um, I think we've had a range of views from the witnesses that we've had. Um, we've, we've heard from, uh, people that are in the teaching profession right now. We've heard, uh, from, I guess, union representatives. And then we've got the parent perspective. And I think, um, what's really struck me about the evidence today is that so far, I think there's been uh, a range of expectations about the teaching profession, depending on the point of view with which you come to it as. So obviously, um, we, and I think the most stark one, for, for myself anyway, was when, uh, the member, uh, who's the union rep indicated that they got an email from their teacher on a Sunday and he said, as a parent, that was um, pleasing to know that, you know, the, the, the teacher had focused on his child. At the time, um, when his union, with his union cap on, he would be saying that person should be, you know, not working about it. Yes. How do you think, um, we find that balance for, for teachers? Because clearly, um, you have a, a great deal of interest in your children's education and depending on obviously the difficulties one child might have that another child doesn't, is depending on how close you work with your teacher. Um, how do we find and how does the department find that balance for their staff where, um, parents are involved but not overly involved? How do we find the way that they engage but don't burn out?
Yeah. I think, I think parents have a responsibility for their children's education as well. I know I've got friends and people I know through COVID that when I say, oh, you know, I've barely got any work done today, I was homeschooling all day. And they said, I didn't do it. I sat there and sort of went, you didn't do it? They're like, no, you didn't do any of it. And that's not on the teacher, that's on the parent. The parents have a responsibility. My boys wouldn't do their homework if I didn't tell them to do it ten times. Um, so I think there is a.
Only ten?
Sorry.
Only ten?
I may have raised my voice the last few times. Um, but yeah, there is a responsibility on parents. It shouldn't be wholly on the teacher or the educator or whatever, um, that is responsible for your child's education. I think teachers should be entitled to their weekend. The stigma that teachers work from nine to three, I have defended that till I'm blue in the face a thousand times. I saw the hours my dad worked as a teacher, as a deputy, as a principal. Nine to three, nev- would, he would leave before the sun came up and get home after the sun went down. So, um, I think your teachers should be available to speak to, you know, via email. Um, later in the evening, they've got to understand parents' work, but I think the weekends should be their time. Same as a lot of us that work the Monday to Friday schedule. Um.
And, sorry, do you mind if I just ask, so obviously you're personally, you, you're employed, as you said, you, you know, you work, you can't always take the time off to school. Um, do you mind if I ask what it is that you do and, and how, how, has your role changed from COVID? Like, have you had to, to work outside of hours or work from home and, and those sorts of things? Have you, how have you adapted personally? And, and did, how did you find that as a parent? Um, with the, I guess, the moving of, um, uh, the way schooling was from, you know, in class to in-person, at home, and then back in class?
I, I work in the construction industry. Um, I'm a project coordinator. And we work very closely with Sydney Water. So it's the Sydney Water infrastructure that I deal with. During COVID and construction was classified as essential work and it was incredibly busy because everybody knew that the construction shutdown was looming and they wanted everything done now, now. Um, I was very lucky in the fact that my parents live walking distance to my house and I called one of the hotlines and on compassionate grounds, I asked if my dad could homeschool my children because he speaks to them like teachers and I just did not have the time. I was working ten, twelve-hour days sometimes. Coming out of COVID, I have to say that relaxed. We went back to the office and things did go back to normal. Um, I do only work Monday to Thursday. Um, Friday, I have responsibilities with my mum and I also have responsibilities at the school. So anything the P and C organizes at the school, myself and my colleague on the P and C, we don't work Fridays. So it happens then. So I am in the school grounds on Fridays a lot more than, say, the average parent. And being on the P and C, you are privy to a, a small amount of in, more information than the average parent. Um, but I, I'm sorry, I've lost my train of thought.
You're busy.
Well, there's none.
I guess, um, what I was asking was, um, that you've worked from home for, you know, a period of time during COVID and then you're back in the office. Have you found that, um, you've still had to, at some point, bring home work home with you? And then how's that interacted with, um, you know, working from home evenings and then having children?
Yeah.
That are, you know, doing schoolwork at the time. Has that, has that engagement, um, been difficult?
Yeah, we realised during COVID how flexible we could be working from home. Um, we didn't work from home, uh, prior to COVID. Now I work from home one day a week, so I'm only in the office three days. I am lucky that my job is very flexible. When things change, my boys' after-school activities change, I can start earlier, so I can finish earlier to attend things like that. COVID has made it a lot more flexible. Um, but also once we were invited back into schools for even something as simple as an assembly, let alone some kind of a concert, I'm, yeah, I'm very lucky in the fact that I can attend most things. Um, because we were kept out of the loop of our children's education for so long, seeing them progress and be back in the school, um, I like to be able to be there to see that.
And I think you said a little bit earlier that, um, you thought it was reasonable that a teacher would, um, be able or available, say, of a school night, week, um, oh, sorry, a weeknight, um, of a school day to perhaps, uh, engage with the parents, to, um, engage in like emails, uh, and, and questions around their, their child's learning. Um, do you think that's a, a pretty standard, um, expectation of parents across New South Wales? That, that there be some level of, um, engagement because I think we're all busier these days and that, um, that we don't always have time to go pick up our children from the school gate and have those conversations that sometimes used to happen, um, I guess, organically, um, when those pickups and drop-offs would happen.
I think that, yes, the teacher should be, you can't expect a response from your child's teacher between the hours of nine and three. Um, you know, if I email the school about something for one of my kids, I cannot expect the teacher to respond between nine and three. They're supervising, they're teaching, they're planning. But after three o'clock, if I need to speak to a teacher, I would really hope that I would get, and you don't contact the school unless it's something pressing. And I would hope that that afternoon, the teacher would, would contact me, be it via email or phone call, because yeah, you don't often contact the school unless it's something pressing you want to speak to them about now, whether it's something that's happened to your child, whether it's something that they've come home upset about, whatever the fact is, you want to get to the bottom of it. So yes, I think after hours, after three o'clock, um, is a time. But then teachers also need to understand that, you know, I can answer my mobile at work, that's fine. But if I was a, you know, a, a nurse or something like that, that doesn't have access to my phone, that there would need to be a little bit more flexibility. So yes, I think teachers need to understand that, you know, parents work as well.
Okay. And do you think it's, uh, I'll say reasonable that the, say, for example, and, um, I guess I'm trying to cite examples that you've actually given as evidence at the moment, um, where perhaps a teacher's heart's not in, I think that's the words you used around another teacher. Um, that, that parents be able to provide that feedback to the school and, um, I guess that you're able to outline to the school what your expectations are. Do you think that's a reasonable, um, uh, position that, that, that parents would have, um, for the people in charge of their children's education?
Look, there's always going to be personality, personality clashes between people. So if you've got a teacher and a parent, perhaps they're just not going to get along. It wasn't that. It was a, um, yeah, this situation that I'm referring to, our complaints were taken seriously by the school. But it was a very unique situation. It was during COVID and there really wasn't much we could do about it. Now, if this happened now, I would ask for my child to be moved out of the class, but my child wasn't the only one whose parents were complaining. So it was a, like I said, it was a unique situation. Sometimes, sometimes teachers and children just don't get along. I mean, you know, lots of kids dislike their teacher because they make them do work. But, um, you know, sometimes not every teacher is going to mesh with every child and there needs to be flexibility to move them around. I haven't experienced that with my children, but I know of people who have.
And where, where parents are, I guess, I'm trying to work out the flip side now. I guess I'm bracketing at this point, trying to work out where the extremes are on this argument and, and what, where is the reasonable centre? Where parents are perhaps applying undue pressure and, um, uh, unreasonable expectations on a, on a teacher, what do you think the appropriate, um, response to that is? And by who should that response be from?
I know that when I met with my son's teacher about his learning difficulties, um, it's not one-on-one, parents versus teacher. I had the principal, I had the, um, assistant principal, and I had the, obviously the teacher and the, the AP, sorry, for, um, three to six at the time. So when it's a panel, if you like, of people and obviously, you know, a parent can take an advocate for them, an extra person. So it's not he said, she said, one-on-one, if there's an argument over something. Um, and, you know, I felt that my, my, my concerns and everything with my oldest were, I, I was heard. Um, but I know some other parents have had issues and not, not just my school, friends with children at multitudes of schools. You know, if they don't like a response the teacher gets. You do have avenues. There's, there's assistant principals, deputy principals. You can go down the line. If you don't like what your principal's got to say, you can always find your way to the director. So there are um, levels of hierarchy you can go through if you don't like what you've heard. But you know, sometimes it's just as much the parents' problem as it is the teachers'. You know, sometimes the parents are unreasonable as well. And that puts a lot of stress on the teacher. I know of an incident many, 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 many years ago with my dad where there was an extremely unreasonable, um, parent that sued the Department of Education, got thrown out. He was told to get out and stop carrying on. But the stress that put, my mum and I thought my dad was going to have a heart attack. He was that stressed about this situation. Um, so I really do think parents can put undue stress on teachers. It's not always the teacher's fault. Sometimes the parents have unrealistic expectations of what the teacher should be doing. You know, they spend this many hours a day with your child. You know, if your child is struggling, perhaps you should help them in the time you have with them in the evening. So I don't always put the blame on teachers like a lot of people do.
Interesting insights. He's just a switch letter.
No.
Um, Mr. Dedham, I invite you there. Ms. Boyd?
I think we're at time.
At time. Um, Ms. Clark, thank you so much for appearing today.
Thank you.
Now, we've, because of the timeframe of this inquiry, um, we, uh, are unable to put some questions to you. So what, um, we'd ask is that when you're provided with a copy of the transcript, if you could let us know within twenty-four hours
Sure.
that, um, if you've got any clarifying points about that transcript, um, we would appreciate that. Um, otherwise, um, thank you very much for appearing today.
Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
I look forward to hearing all about it.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. It's nice to see you.
Hi, everyone. Um, we'll just get a name card for you, but, um, what we might do is, um, I will.
Uh, fantastic. Um, my name's Carla Wiltshire. I'm the CEO of the Social Policy Group and Director of the Centre for Digital Wellbeing. And, um, uh, sorry, I'm not quite sure if I have the wording for the both of affirmation.
Um, would you like the oath or the affirmation? Um, the oath of, uh,
Oh, affirmation, please.
Affirmation. Um, I solemnly and sincerely truly declare and affirm.
I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm.
That the evidence I am about to give.
That the evidence I'm about to give.
Will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
And I did that from memory, so I hope that was right. Um, Ms. Brewer?
Hi, um, I'm Jocelyn Brewer. I am a psychologist, former teacher and school councillor and associate with the Centre for Digital Wellbeing. And I too solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Um, would either or both of you like to start with an opening statement? And if so, um, I'd ask you to keep it to no more than a couple of minutes. Do you have one?
I can go first if you would like.
Yes, um, thank you.
Do have one I have prepared. So,
Excellent.
Um, about this time twenty years ago, after completing a one-year degree, I started teaching social sciences at Chester Hill High School in Sydney's South West. Um, last February, I walked very unceremoniously out of Chester Hill High School for the last time. During these last nineteen years, I had taught, uh, six different subjects over five years, uh, created and coordinated the state's largest debating programme, completed a scholarship to retrain to become a school councillor, in which I did an honest thesis exploring gaming addiction in year ten boys. I became a registered psychologist and won a teacher's premier, uh, premier's teaching scholarship to explore digital wellbeing and media literacy. I had a baby who is now in year one at her local primary school. Uh, I created and administered a Facebook group for nearly seven hundred school councillors and completed a masters finally, uh, investigating smartphone addiction in a group of year seven kids, um, across public schools. When I started, two in three, uh, two out of thirty kids would have had dial-up at their home to access the internet. Um, now we would find that in a class of thirty, we'd probably find maybe two didn't have a smartphone, probably because it had either been confiscated or lost or, you know, was broken. So I chose to resign from the department, um, when I was not permitted to work as a school councillor part-time. I think my resignation made me the sixty-ninth vacancy, um, across the state. A figure that I think is reported to be gone up to about a hundred and six by the middle of the year. However, that doesn't include those on extended leave. The implication of this chronic shortage, I'm sure, is not lost on the room um, in terms of the, uh, impact on youth mental health in the wake of the pandemic. Um, my request to work part-time, um, was basically made so that I could continue my work in cyberpsychology and developing education programmes to both prevent and treat digital disorders. Um, it's the expertise that I obviously hold in this area now. That is the reason I've been invited here today as an advisor to the Centre for Digital Wellbeing. So I could talk about these issues all day, as you can tell, um, but I'm grateful for the opportunity and look forward to answering your questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brewer. Um, Ms. Wiltshire, did you have an opening statement as well?
Uh, I'll just keep mine very brief. Uh, we run, uh, the Centre for Digital Wellbeing, uh, which, um, really brings together expertise, um, and experts from across Australia and also internationally, uh, looking at issues such as youth mental health and wellbeing, uh, in, um, an era of digitalisation, uh, but also looking at issues around mobile phone technology and its impact on young people, including mental health. Um, and we've got a particular interest, I think, in, uh, the use of technology in schools. Um, some of the issues that we particularly focus on are around the impact in terms of student wellbeing, classroom culture and performance, uh, and its impact in terms of school refusal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I'll now invite, uh, questions from the committee and I'll start with the opposition. Uh, the Honourable Courtney Husas.
Thanks very much, um, Mr. Chair, and thank you, um, to both of you for making time to appear today. Um, our inquiry is about teachers' shortages and also about the impact on student outcomes and wellbeing. So I think, Ms. Brewer, or both of you are very, very well equipped to, um, to talk about that. Ms. Brewer, can you just start by talking about the impact of the vacancies in the councillor positions on students?
Um, yeah, look, it basically means that you have a duly qualified teacher and psychologist that is simply not there, so I walked out and there was that gap. Um, it, it means that things like suicide assessment, really coordinating some of those learning, um, uh, individual learning programmes, doing the actual learning assessments, IQ tests and things like that aren't being completed. Um, because there's simply not anyone there. Often we might refer to things like Headspace for long-term therapy. So I, I didn't do a lot of long-term therapy because I simply didn't have time to do that. It was really a triage system where we're relying then on, um, outsourcing to other psychologists. Me, for instance, I now do some of that work, um, because there's simply no one there. Um, there, there is student support officers who can do some of the, the kind of, I guess, groundwork and the foundational work. Um, but in terms of, you know, being well placed, we, we have head teachers of wellbeing who often are on that head teacher level but have no formal qualifications in mental health. They're usually year advisors who have very, you know, are those people who love their job and really want to, want to support, but they're not necessarily have any of those skills to deal with the high-level stuff that councils end up dealing with, with, you know, executive principals and directors.
So you said you made a request to work part-time and that was refused. On what grounds was that refused?
Um, I believe there's a directive coming from, um, the Dells to get all school councillors back to full-time. Um, I, I have no understanding of why. My, my base school, Chester Hill High School, which had, I think, twelve vacancies, um, was, um, making sure that everyone was working full-time. Um, I was there, my, it was my base school, I needed to be there for three days. I was requesting to work three days. Um, I had actually received that leave without pay from all of my previous principals. It was just at this time that it was knocked back and I explained why I wanted to do it. It's something that no, no one else really is doing in the department itself, despite me being in the department for so long and chipping away at this wasn't really giving me that space to actually, you know, lead digital wellbeing or talk about those issues.
Yeah, I mean, it just seems ridiculous that in this day and age when we are, there is such a shortage of school councillors and you are wanting to work part-time, that surely a little bit of something is better than nothing at all. But we can, we can take this up for the next department witnesses.
We can talk about that, you know, at length another time.
I just want to ask you quickly, so, um, in, in, there's been a lot of talk about the ratio of school coun, school councillors to students. Um, what do you, so what was your experience of the ratio?
Um, look, the ratio has been, you know, it's twenty-one years since the Vincent Inquirer when they actually suggested one is to five hundred. My experience is working in somewhere like Chester Hill High, which is, uh, probably thirteen hundred students these days and there's one full-time equivalent councillor. Now, what we, what we saw a couple of years ago, um, under Ms. Barrett Jickleyan was we wanted to have one full-time equivalent in every high school. Now, if I'm in a high school of thirteen hundred, but I actually used to be in a high school of six hundred, which high school would I like to work at? Given the mental load of the kind of work that I do day in, day out, where I'm dealing with suicidality, which sometimes is, is just kids talking about, oh, what is life and what happens when you die? And it's sometimes somebody really absolutely considering ending their life right then and there. So, um, even from my experience of talking to my school councillor colleagues, many want to work from part-time just for the space that they need to be able to do their job well when they're there.
And it's processing a lot for you as well as an individual, right? That's, that's part of it. Um, I wanted to ask you then, just, uh, because we've got limited time, I think we could probably talk about this all afternoon, just about then the links to smartphone and gaming addiction that you've done research in. How, what are the levels of smartphone and gaming addiction that we're seeing in our kids at school?
Yeah, yeah. Smartphones, I, I guess we'd look at quite separately to games. So gaming generally, we'd see one to three percent of most populations meeting criteria for really the pointy end of addiction. Clinical addictions where we, we would use that A-word for addictions as opposed to being at risk of problematic use or pathological use, where we see there's a lot more people who might sort of start having, um, vulnerabilities to not going to school, for instance. Some of the, the school refusal issues we see are maybe linked to post-pandemic getting back to school and then getting back off, um, games. Um, so while there's one to three percent, there's probably ten to fifteen percent that are at risk. Smartphones are slightly different in that, um, really, a, a phone is kind of, to, to use an analogy that people love to go with, with technology as drugs, I would see that device as being more like a syringe. And it's whether or not you're giving yourself a vaccination, you're a diabetic using insulin, or you're mainlining heroin. That's the difference in what we're talking about kids using smartphones for. And I guess is the nuance of, of the issue around why it's so complex and restricting some access and putting a container around literally your phone to help you be able to concentrate in schools is, is really important. So very different issues, I guess, even though you can game on your mobile.
Yeah, of course. Sorry, and I shouldn't have confused the two. You're exactly right.
And, and this, I guess, is one of the issues with when we talk about technology is such a broad thing. It's like which device doing what thing with what cognition. So even something like Instagram, using the example of the Australian of the Year, we, we, we could be following people like her and some hashtags that actually then trick the algorithm in giving us what I would call digitally nutritious content, rather than kind of consuming highly processed, you know, your feed, literally. There's many food analogies here that we can use that, um, you know, is, is like junk food.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a, and, and how important do you think it is to make sure that kids don't have that distraction from a smartphone or from a device when they are actually in the classroom?
Look, these days it's incredibly important because that's one of the key skills. Concentration, your executive functioning skills are one of the key skills that put us ahead of AI, right? We're creating the AI. There's a big conversation about ChatGPT, um, which is a natural language programme that is, runs up in arms about plagiarism and things like that at, at the moment. And our response has been to ban that, as opposed to say, what critical skills do we have as humans? And what higher order thinking do we need to do to be smarter than the bot? Um, so we need to protect, um, our executive function skills, which includes focus, concentration, activation, you know, doing the tricky stuff, rather than gratifying immediate needs. But, um, alongside that, I think it's really important that we teach those critical and creative thinking skills, which are in the Australian curriculum, right? Critical and creative thinking, ethical understanding, personal and social capability. These are things in the Australian curriculum. In New South Wales, we call them slightly different things, but they're already there waiting for us to teach.
Yeah. So can I say a question on that? So, um, I guess part of preparing, um, our children for the rest of the world and the rest of their lives is, um, teaching them to restrict their own behaviour in certain ways, so.
Self-regulation and self-control?
So from what you're, you're saying, it's really important that they learn when it's appropriate to have a phone,
Absolutely.
when, when it's appropriate to use it. Um, just in terms of whether or not children should be able to bring phones to school at all, do you have a view on that? Or is it just really within class time that it needs to be limited?
Um, look, I think that goes to a much broader issue in society of our freedom to, you know, choose what we buy and what we give our kids. So I, I sort of sometimes jokingly, sometimes not jokingly, say, well, maybe the answer to this is actually restricting parents from buying their children mobile phones until they are fourteen or thirteen or whatever the age is there. Um, that's obviously impossible. Um, and parents choose to have phones or even smartwatches for their children for a variety of reasons, usually to do with safety. Um, even though, you know, crime statistics would say our society is much safer than it was when I was growing up. We had safety houses everywhere that freaked me out and they had a mental map of, you know, what to do in a stranger danger situation. So the socio-cultural issues that sit behind these are really what drive some of the choices around consumers to buy the technology in the first place, and I think we need to look at that. Um, things like the development of high-density housing along railway lines, where there's not extra playgrounds, basketball courts, swimming pools, libraries, community centres. What else are we giving young people to do, really? We say, don't go on your phone, but also, sorry, we forgot to build you a park or we forgot to plan for those needs. And we see even in primary schools, some of your public school has to roster kids onto green spaces because we, there's, you know, a trigger around that urban planning stuff.
So, but back to the question, if I, so for instance, you know, my daughter, she's in year eight. She will take her phone with her. She doesn't use it during the, the school has a policy, you don't use it during, um, class time. Uh, but at lunch, she might pull it out and send me a thing saying my maths assignment went well. Um, by the way, I'm going to hang out at so-and-so's place this afternoon. And that's it. Um, oh, I guess what's the view of being able to use it responsibly in that way?
And this comes back to how many different ways do we use technology? Because while your daughter's doing that, there are other kids who are doing maybe less, you know, um,
Yeah, sure.
And, and, and how do we police that, I guess? Or how do we kind of check?
Self-regulation.
Teach, but teach self-regulation. And I guess a, a lot of the time, teachers, if you see somebody using a phone, if I was, you know, on my phone right now, there would be a whole bunch of judgement that we came at that with because, um, what, what am, what am I actually doing? And, and the guess with young people is you're on social media and you're wasting your time. Um, as opposed to I'm talking to mum or I'm lining this up or I'm saying, you know, I left my stuff on the train, which is me.
Or I'm writing notes down of thoughts in my head.
Yeah, or, you know, like, I mean, I've had young people get in, in trouble, so to speak, because they were, um, live streaming their lesson. And they were live streaming their lesson to a kid that was at home with COVID. So, um, I guess it's difficult to kind of look at what are we doing? And how can we separate the kids who are doing, um, more digitally nutritious things from kids who are doing things that do involve risk? And how does, you know, some of the restrictions and responsible use policies actually put that container around and have consistency for schools? Like, I just think of it from the perspective of principals, how do we actually come up with what are the rules? And if that's sort of given a, a broad, um, kind of guideline for how to do that, that's helpful to principals without having to recreate the wheel.
But if the goal is responsible usage and the goal is preparing children to be able to go out into the world and, and to be.
Then we need to teach those skills, absolutely.
So, so is the answer to ban the schools from, to ban the phones from the schools or to instead teach responsible usage?
I think it needs to be both at this point. So the example, um, or the analogy I use here is, um, building, uh, pool fences. So we fence all of our pools, right? There's rules around building pool fences. We also teach swimming lessons. So we teach those skills, how do you dive into the digital waters and swim? The problem here, I guess, where there's a limitation of, um, is that can we fence the ocean of the internet and the way that we use all of technology all of the time? So I, I think the, an investment in kind of supporting responsible use while teaching digital literacy and media literacy is, like, they need to go hand in hand, like pool fences and swimming lessons.
I just wanted to provide, um, Ms. Wiltshire, the opportunity to perhaps, um, provide some, uh, input into, uh, the debate here. And, and you've certainly had the opportunity to hear the questions of, um, the, uh, committee, but also hear Ms. Brewer's, um, uh, views on, on those questions. I'm just curious if you might have some views yourself. And is there a, um, is it fair to say that there would be, uh, uniformity amongst the, um, uh, I guess the, uh, the experts in this area? Um, or is there perhaps a, a number of views? Um, and what might those views be if they are different?
Yeah, um, I don't think you ever get uniformity in views on, on, um, uh, an entire, um, body of research. Um, but at the same time, I think there is a general consensus that has emerged amongst experts and that is that to, um, to a degree, it is important that we protect the space for young people to develop skill sets around attention, but also, um, social development, um, and skill sets around socialisation. Uh, and I suppose pointing to that, uh, point around, um, playground time is that to some extent, the impact of technology, and there is an emerging evidence based on this, the impact of technology in terms of playground, uh, is that it can have quite a detrimental effect in terms of young people learning how to socialise, eye contact, um, negotiating skills, um, uh, really that sort of free play time that's really critical to later social skills that are important for the workplace and for life.
Okay. And do you have a view about, um, the, and I guess it kind of goes to the point that Ms. Boyd had, which was, um, teaching it to be a responsible, um, uh, and self-managed, uh, issue as opposed to, I guess, the more draconian, um, we're banning something. How do we find that balance as a, um, as educate, like, for the. How do we find that balance as a um as educate, like for the education um uh educators at school? To to try and teach people to be self um uh
To self-regulate.
Yeah, but also then to regulate um what it is that they're doing if if it doesn't exist at all.
Oh, look, I think that's a fantastic question and I think it has to start very early. Uh so in a lot of countries that we've looked at overseas, uh really even at kindergarten, you're starting to introduce a relationship to technology where you're talking to people about how to have a healthy relationship. That does that's not necessarily the same as introducing a device. Um you know, I think you can often delay the process of device usage. But at the same time, really provide the skill sets that people need to be able to use technology and to consider the use of technology. Um and I think Ms. Brewer um talked about uh the way in which uh the Australian curriculum provides key points around that uh as it stands and and particularly around the ethics of the use of digital technology, but also looking at critical digital information um uh skills and research uh uh as well as kind of um considerations around privacy and data privacy. And you know, that's certainly an area that needs to be looked into as well. A lot of young people aren't necessarily um don't they're not necessarily conscious of the amount of content that they're putting online that is um personal markers and information. Uh and so introducing that as early as we can into uh the curriculum and providing those sorts of skill sets, I think are critical.
I think um what I've um discovered in my time, I guess, looking at issues on any number of um topics is that there's where where somebody advocates for a a position like you you are Ms. Brewer on on, you know, things like mobile phones, et cetera. Um that there's never really a perfect solution, as in there are always going to be downsides to doing something. Um so in your experience, what would be the downside perhaps of banning mobile phones in in schools?
So again, I don't want to be pedantic about semantics, but when we talk about bans, like even that language for me. We're talking about how do we set up that ban, right? How do we put that in place? And do young people have some buy-in to how what that looks like? My research has shown that most young people are like, yes, please support some boundaries in place. We really like rules. We really like being having clear idea of what is allowed and not allowed so we can follow along.
You didn't meet my younger self, obviously.
Well, and and the kids that I like working with are the kids who are gonna break those bands, the kids who are gonna find ways around the electromagnetic pouches by buying the unlocker on Amazon and charging for those to be unlocked at lunchtime, right? They're the kind of kids who I want to have a voice in some of these issues because they're the ones we want to work with to see like where are those vulnerabilities and how do we kind of shape their um self-regulation and their their self-control. So um when it comes to, your question was like what are the case against a ban? Um I I don't, again, I don't think anyone in this area would call for like a free-for-all, let's have TikTok instead of trigonometry. We're not there. But when it comes to um, I guess, banning something, it's really the process by which we go along with that. Are we really doing um effective stakeholder engagement? Some of the questions that I've seen put to parents about would you like a smartphone ban? It's like, would you like a pay rise? Who's gonna say no to that? Would you like your phone, kids' phones to be restricted so they can learn while we teach them all the skills they need to be an effective global citizen in the future that is coming at us thick and fast? Yes.
That's sorry, that's not what this, sorry, that's not what the question is. The question is not, do you like, yes, I want my my children to not be looking at their phones during a lesson. But I do want them to be able to look at those phones between lessons or at at lunch if that's what they are wanting to do in a responsible way. So
I think actually Ms. Boyd and I, we're sort of, we have an understanding about this because I think we both have children that have um learning difficulties and 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 some social issues. And I think we we come from a from a different perspective as parents.
Yeah.
Where that connection with our child is actually sometimes the very thing that makes our child
Absolutely.
um a better learner during the time they are in school.
Mm-hmm.
So and I guess where I'm trying to go with this and, you know, I'll, you know, instead of doing the long lead, I'll just come straight out. So obviously, I'm aware that you have provided um the opposition some views around and and some advice. You know, with relation to the mobile phone ban.
I have spoken about the fact that we need to do more research.
Well, I guess they've cited you in a lot of their um uh releases and that's that's obviously, um I've just been having a look at that. And I guess so in from that perspective, I guess they're using your views around mobile phone bans and they've been promoting it uh online. Now.
So I I would just correct that.
Sorry, I'm gonna take a point.
Yeah, no, 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 I am.
And I'm just going to say that Iris, Ms. Brewer has just shown she has extensive knowledge in this area. She is an independent expert that has been invited to appear before the committee. If you've got a specific question for her, then you can ask a specific question.
Well, I think the chair was getting to that. I think the chair was providing some context.
Need to colour her independent credentials despite the fact that New South Wales may be citing those.
No, 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 I guess I was.
So to clarify.
Yes.
My connection to that was what do I think about an announcement around two point five million dollars of research to do better research to look at what we need to do to make bans effective? Um I think that however I get cited on the internet, if you go beyond that, you'll find a lot of other things that I've said about some um smartphone bans. And what we need to do because of the nuances of the fact that your child needing to contact you to check in is a lifeline. Other parents and other, you know, in different contexts. Um parents are checking in about a a variety of things that are what I would call less important. And how we define that is is, I guess, one of the things that I find confusing. Especially I I'm thinking about a playground teacher who's trying to do their job and enforce whatever rules, even without like statewide bans currently, there are schools who use those pouches and do all variety of of things, that it's really hard for a teacher to not to know how to do some of those those things consistently. And so it's like everything needs very like individualised approach to things. Where um yeah, that responsible use and teaching those skills and and, you know, individualising things is really important. There is no one.
Just just picking up on this. Well, just before we do that, I'm just going to address uh the point of order that Ms. was taken. And um I do accept that um I hadn't actually had the chance to ask a question, which is um and obviously as the chair, uh I seek to be impartial and I wasn't seeking to colour your evidence with uh impartiality.
Clarify my position here.
No, 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 I I guess I guess I was just asking that um obviously the the topic of um mobile phones being banned or not banned has been
Yes.
um part of the um the campaign that's currently before uh us with the election approaching. However, um what I always as chair, no matter which inquiry or or what I'm doing. When I'm sitting in the chair in in charge of an inquiry, I act impartially. What I was seeking to do was actually inquire as to the advice and around the policy because I guess partly I'm also looking at um the differences between the two, I guess, views that that are being progressed as we approach the election. And I was seeking to find out what you had provided as by way of advice because they are citing you, but also the question was to be um if we are banning something. One, how would we do that? And obviously, you've said there's there's.
I have a webinar that you can attend that I outline exactly some of the things you need to consider.
Yes, um so that's the first thing. But also when we talk about banning things to the government or an opposition or any time. Um one of the first arguments is to always put up is is that when we ban something, we're just banning the people that follow the rules from doing the right thing, who who would do the right thing from doing the right thing. Those that are gonna do the wrong thing are going to do it regardless and they'll find a way around it. How do you think that um with that in mind?
Yep.
These things are achievable? Um and how do we make sure that people as Ms. Boyd and I would have indicated that we're not harming those that are gonna do the right thing um and would do the right thing by banning something and then those that would do the wrong thing. Those would those would do the wrong thing would actually um still just get around it.
Absolutely. So that's where the the complexity of how you set that up, how you um put consequences in place for that. So what's the consequence? I'm working with schools in South Australia at the moment about how they implement what the state government has put into place because they're like, they haven't told us really how to do it. Well, here's my suggestions, okay? Um I I would, you know, put to you then, why has Chat G P T been banned in New South Wales schools if we shouldn't ban things? Where is the conversation around ethical use and how to think better than the A I and all of those things? So there's a, I guess, um you know, conflict here or a, you know, um tension here between you're indicating we shouldn't ban smartphones, but you know.
Oh, I'm not I'm not progressing here. Sorry, I'm just.
So so well, there's there's a tension between should we ban this or should we ban that? Like this Chat G P T has can't be accessed, but there are kids who are gonna have their V P N, who have enough data, who are doing what they need to do. So.
Whereas, sorry, yeah, you can just on that because then you put the South Australian university approach, which is very much, people are gonna use it. We need to teach them to use it responsibly, but also to be able to disclose to us when they have used it. This is something they're gonna have in the workplace. This is a life skill they need to have.
Yeah.
Um so, yeah, that's very much. And I would say, I could, you know, banning banning games of Chat G P T in primary schools, sure. Um but perhaps there's there's room for for some sort of.
So is it fair to sort of then, I guess, glean from that answer that um it's actually a much more complex and multi-layered, multifaceted um policy and solution. It's not it's not a you you it's not something that could be really distilled down to we're banning mobile phones in schools.
I think there's some input on that as well.
Yep. Um look, I think it's also important that sometimes the language that we use focuses our attention on one thing over another thing. And I think we're focusing on whether or not we should ban mobile phones. And I think equally important is what should we protect in terms of the spaces for young people? And the spaces for positive um relationships between um students and teachers to form. Uh for classrooms to be effective, uh for performance um and classroom performance. Uh to be able to run uninterrupted uh and to be able to improve. Um and also, uh how do we protect the space for young people in terms of a a world of cyber bullying, et cetera? Um in order to reduce anxiety and increase uh rates of school attendance. So I think we're focusing a lot on what does a ban mean? And I think we need to also focus on what is, how do we protect the space for young people to learn? Uh free of interference from uh pieces of technology which might come into that space continually. I think you raise a really important point around medical exceptions. Um and particularly around neurodiversity, um because I think that is again goes to how do you implement something in a nuanced way? And I think that's a really, really critical point because for children who do have neurodiversity, technology can actually be a significant enabling factor. And so I wanted to acknowledge that as well.
Could I just ask one, sorry, one question? Just um as part of your research, I guess, have you asked children what they think? Because I always find, particularly with neurodivergent children, you ask them what will help you focus or what would help you do whatever. And they're very good at telling you exactly what would help. Um so.
So all my research has been student-led.
Yes, okay. And what are children telling you?
Or young people, um year seven and year ten kids. Um so I do quantitative rather than qualitative studies because of the level that I was at. So there wasn't a lot of space for them to tell me a lot of things, but um generally they um know that their parents don't really understand their online worlds. And that they usually know how to kind of shift their behaviours so that it looks like they're doing the right thing a lot of the time. Um a lot of my research was around parental styles. So what kind of parent do you have? In terms of how do they manage your technology use? And then the relationship between, um basically, parents who didn't trust their kids were more prone to have difficulties with using their smartphone and and proneness to smartphone addiction um than kids who had more um firm but fair parents and things like that. It's a very small sample. It is a master's research, so it's not like, you know, it's translatable. The other thing my masters found was that kids who had higher levels of self-control um were less prone to have um problems using and managing their phone. So self-control isn't just about I cannot do this now. It's actually about I cannot do this now because I have something better that I'm trying to work towards. And really giving kids that sense of their future, a hopeful future, a future that they have efficacy and autonomy and control over is um, you know, pretty, the the young people that I work with often tell me that they feel kind of bleak about where the world is at. Um and again, that's a clinical population, so slightly different. So um it's all complex.
What what have they told you specifically about the idea of having their phones restricted during school time?
Um sixty-seven percent of the kids um at a school that I did some research said that they were okay with with restrictions on their phones if they had a say. And it was fairly implemented. Sixty-seven percent of them also told me that the main reason they or one of the reasons that they were using their phone was to text their parents back.
Yeah, right.
Right? So um yeah, there's a whole conversation there around um yes, communication during the day um and and what different kids need. Um can I just ask one more?
Uh can I can I just have a jump in? I've been waiting for a while.
Oh, I will make sure you get a chance.
Oh, sorry, I think we want a comment on the screen as well beforehand.
Yeah.
No, that's okay. Uh that's fine.
Uh look, I was just gonna ask the question in terms of, we heard yesterday from uh the Teachers' Federation, Andrea Gabriel Artis. Um that it was a response that teachers actually had a differing opinion on when it came to the ban of mobile phones in schools. Some teachers incredibly supportive, some not supportive. Um and probably for the divergent views that you've outlined today, just interesting in terms of and I asked him the question about is it something that should be done on a school basis where the principal would, for instance, enact it? Um his response was that there needed to be some statewide guidance, but picking up on your comments there about the sixty-seven percent of students who want to say um the issues that have been raised by Ms. Boyd and Mr. Fang uh with respect to individual students, do you think this is something that should be led by the school level where there's sort of a better understanding of the students and the cohorts and potentially the activities that um may be part of it?
My approach there, I think, would be to honour, I guess, that, you know, teachers and and educational leaders know their schools better than anyone else. And that there's different models for implementing responsible use or bans or whatever you wanna call it across multiple devices as well. Just want to point out that Snapchat, which was probably the second most popular um social media platform, is now available on a desktop. So you don't need your phone to actually access it. Um passing notes these days is literally Google, Google Docs. Um so all of those distractions can happen on multiple devices. Um so I think having some guidelines and some a kind of clear um like overlay of how you would put those um responsible use into place for schools to then choose what parts they actually take up would be useful. That basically echoes exactly what the Smartphone Review in twenty eighteen said. If we go back and look at that research, which I was initially a part of, but then was removed from because I wasn't seen as independent because I worked for the department, even though I was on maternity leave, I wasn't allowed to be a part of that review. Um that review basically sums things up in terms of rest, you know, restrictions or containers around use can be useful if we honour what schools need to do and we support them with putting that into place. Again, um I'm interested in the equality between not just spending tens of thousands of dollars on electromagnetic pouches. But also investing in those skills, social and, you know, soft skills that young people need to be able to control um their use, but, you know, um behave ethically in online spaces and and call out some of the things that happen in those spaces that are unhealthy, unhelpful and.
So in a binary selection where you've got um what you've just outlined as as a solution and a statewide ban, would it be fair to say that you prefer that um former position, the one you've just outlined?
Um if there was such a thing as a binary situation, and I think we're playing with hypotheticals when we're talking about anything in this world being binary. I think it's complex. We've all agreed that it's complex and that it's a dance between taking some control and putting some, you know, again, we're getting into semantics, limitations around that. Aligned with the other things that keep us human in a in a tech-saturated world. We have immersive technologies coming our way, web three point zero, the the internet of tomorrow that, again, we're not really talking about here and that's you know, and another big issue as well as the what young people go home to. So whatever container you put around school, whether you absolutely blanket banning it. And I know principals who will lock phones away for the entire of the term. And they brag about that.
Yep.
Um versus, you know, different things. We still need to consider what home environment young people go home, go back to and that digital wild west. Of and the support that their parents need. They're absolutely overwhelmed around how to deal with the conflict. Of, and the support that their parents need, they're absolutely overwhelmed around how to deal with the conflict, around how to let young people access their friends and have that competence, control and connection in their online spaces and give them those healthy boundaries. And health in itself is quite moralistic. What's healthy for my child is probably very different to what's healthy for yours and our values might be completely different. So again, how we, um, engage parents to be, you know, interested in this and get them out of their own overwhelm. I think most adults, whether they're teachers or parents, are super overwhelmed by where do we start?
So if I was to rephrase it then, and not a binary situation, but you are not in support of a complete ban. You're in support of a more, a more, a more, I guess, nuanced approach.
She's given you an answer.
Yes. Um, Ms Sussos.
I just wanted to ask you then, how well you think that, um, screen and phone sort of control is currently done in schools? How do, how well do you think we are going at the moment?
Honestly, I'm not in schools enough these days. Um, I haven't really been full-time in schools for a chunk of years. Um, I have lots of people who I know, um, I sit on all different sides of this conversation and it really depends on the school and the teacher. Um, if I'm a drama teacher who is really on top of the memes on TikTok and really want to engage young people in the spaces they play in, then I'm not going to have some of those concerns as a, um, let's say more mature maths teacher where the utility of some technology just isn't there. So, um, it's, I, I, I'm just going to keep saying it's very nuanced and we need to look at this on a much more humanistic kind of, um, level where the research is pre-registered, it's replicable, we stop self-reporting things like time online um, as just that metric and really look at the utility or what we're calling the screenome, like the genome, the way that different people use technology, because that, that's really key.
Just one more. Oh, one, yep. Um, you mentioned briefly as well the South Australian experience. Um, do you mind sharing this with us at all about what's happened in South Australia and what their experience in the moment with their introduction?
Um, my understanding is that, um, a, a ban was announced by the Premier and that is in place starting this year, but it's expected to be in place by semester two. So the schools that I'm working with, we're kind of doing a staged approach where we are kind of, um, doing some stakeholder engagement and looking at the, the kind of edges of what goes wrong with some of those blanket, um, ways of approaching it. And then building in the digital, um, wellbeing and social emotional skills so that they're ready for that environment from semester two.
And I think you touched upon the challenges, sorry, touched upon the challenges as well in terms of the directions of what happens if, you know, you breach the policy and what the consequences are.
One of the things that schools, um, the school that I'm working with is kind of like, well, what are the consequences?
Hmm.
And they're not sure. And my response was go and ask the kids who get in trouble for this stuff and like set that up with them so that they're informing like what kind of things do go wrong? And what are the excuses or reasons given? So, Carla?
Yeah, I was going to say that I think one of the things that South Australia is looking really closely at at the moment and I think is, um, probably a lesson for all states to start to look at and see how they implement it, is what do they do in terms of preparing kids for a positive relationship with technology? So alongside limitations of mobile phone use, they really are looking at a, um, augmented, um, programme around, um, digital wellbeing and trying to look at how they integrate that into a curriculum. And I think that will be critical.
Thank you.
Certainly sounds more complex than us to slogan anyway.
Yeah. And early education is another thing we haven't even spoken about, you know, like that's kind of where it starts.
That's just one last question.
Oh, because you asked nicely, okay.
Thank you. Um, just because we are talking about teacher shortages as well, I'm interested in, um, the use of, whether it's mobile phones or other types of digital distractions in class, um, as a product of, you know, not having, um, a teacher who is able to pay attention necessarily because they're so stretched or, you know, it's not their class or they're, you know, not the thing they normally teach. In your research, did you get any kind of, um, feedback from students as to why they might be using? Um, is, was there any connection, do you think, with, with teacher shortages or not, not sort of?
Not so much. I mean, the reason kids are looking at their phones are things like there's no clock on the wall anymore because it doesn't work. Um, I'm taking a photo of the stuff on the board because I don't have time to write it down. Or the teacher said, take a photo of this. I'm using, uh, I'm Googling something that the firewall won't let me access even though it's kind of legit and it's related to, you know, year eight geography or whatever it is.
Yeah, okay.
Um, yes, they're texting their friends and saying where they're going to meet up or all of those other things as well, which kind of then lends to a whole nother piece here, which is kind of the amount of information that we're consuming and that we're, we're all consuming. Some people call it info obesity, that, um, it's just from the moment we wake up to the moment we go to bed, we are consuming data, whether it's quality data or not. Um, it's a huge volume compared to previous generations. And that, that's, has full of, um, potential links to a, a range of things, just mental fog, anxiety, all those kinds of things. Thank you.
Can I just interject and say as well, just in, um, some of the survey work that we have done with teachers? Um, teachers have indicated that, um, mobile phones, uh, are sometimes used because they are stretched um, and they're not able to be, uh, able to properly prepare and so to some extent they rely on technology. Um, and secondly, that they've also indicated that parents texting children during class time and children responding in real time to complain about the teachers and then subsequently causing, um, parents to then phone them is, um, a significant stress in terms of, um, uh, teachers' wellbeing uh, and has led to an attrition. So that, tho- those things do pop up occasionally in teacher surveys and consultations as well.
Well, unfortunately we are out of time because I've found this quite fascinating and, um, I've really, um, I really enjoyed the session. But, um, I wanted to thank both of you for, uh, appearing before us today and providing your insights to the committee. Um, unfortunately, because of the timeframes of the committee, um, we're not able to provide questions on notice to you, so, or supplement your questions. So, um, what we ask is that when you're provided the transcripts, uh, of today's hearing, if you could let us know within twenty-four hours of that provision, uh, of if you've got any corrections uh, so that we can get the report done and, and completed. Uh, but thank you very much for appearing today. Thank you. And we'll just now switch over, uh, to our last witnesses for the day. Sure. I'll just give you a few moments to, um, okay, films and, um, then we'll make a start. Is everybody happy to commence the swearing-in process? Well, um, I'll now welcome our last set of witnesses for today. Uh, I'll ask, uh, the witnesses, starting from my left, uh, to state name and position title. That's where either a note or affirmation please.
Good afternoon, Committee. Murat Dizdar, Deputy Secretary, School Performance South, New South Wales Department of Education. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much, Mr Dizdar. Uh, Mr Ruming.
Good afternoon, Committee and Chair, Sean Rumming, Chief People Officer, Department of Education. I solemnly and sincerely truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you so much.
Uh, Leanne Nixon, Deputy Secretary, uh, School Performance North. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you so much. Now, you'd all be well-practiced as, uh, as witnesses, but, um, I'll just ask, uh, do you have, uh, three separate opening statements or just one and who might be giving it? And, um, if so, could you keep it to no more than a couple of minutes?
Uh, that'll be me, Chair. That's okay.
Thank you. Far away.
Great. Um, I have, we have a, um, uh, introduction that, um, probably is more than just a few minutes. So if I could table that at the end, that would be good knowledge to.
That would very much appreciate, especially for hands-on.
Okay, great. Um, thank you, Chair. I'd like to acknowledge, um, the direct people, the traditional custodians of the land and also recognise that we are in the first week of school. Um, we want to wish, uh, all the best to our students coming back for the year twenty twenty-three and to the dedicated teachers, principals and staff, um, that, uh, are looking after all of their learning through the school year. Let me start by acknowledging the significant number of the committee's recommendations from the last inquiry late last year that reflect the existing policy and work underway, uh, in the department. Uh, I also acknowledge that the government has not finalised, um, and submitted their final response to that, which I believe is, uh, next week. Um, so that will be forthcoming. While there are always more things to do, it's been good to see some progress since the last inquiry. The committee previously examined the teacher supply strategy and I'm happy to provide an update as requested. The strategy is a ten-year programme that sits in addition to existing recruitment programmes and efforts and responds to a challenge being experienced nationally and globally. To date, we've had more than four hundred and sixty people participate across our teacher supply strategy initiatives. This includes almost two hundred and fifty teachers who are teaching in the New South Wales Public Education System for the first time or have relocated to regional, rural or remote areas. And more than two hundred and ten people who are already or in the beginning of the process of training to be teachers. As a result of the interventions and progress to date, current modelling show improved outlooks for teacher supply with a surplus forecast at a macro level, uh, past twenty twenty-seven. Many of the strategies initiatives feature in the National Teacher Workforce Action Plan, which provides strong validation of, of our approach in New South Wales. A number of teacher supply initiatives are performing better than expected. For example, the Grow Your Own Programme is significantly oversubscribed to the original targets that were set and shared with the committee. I'm pleased to say the initiative to recruit teachers from overseas, which has been behind schedule, is building momentum. We have twelve teachers in classrooms as of today, five more starting soon and more than twenty at the office stage. And more than five hundred qualified applicants have been shortlisted. Over the past five years, the department has permanently filled, on average, more than six thousand teaching roles each year with a record eight thousand six hundred teaching positions filled in the year twenty twenty-two. In the year twenty twenty-one, the New South Wales Public Schools student-to-teacher ratio continued a falling trend and we expect that to continue when we crunch the data for twenty twenty-two. We are also acutely aware there remain specific supply challenges in particular subjects and geographical areas, particularly in secondary settings, uh, across New South Wales in rural and remote areas. That's why we've made these focus areas for targeted interventions and initiatives under the strategy. What I've been hearing when I've been out in schools is, is some of the challenges that relate to supply in specific subjects, geographical areas, and others that relate to the acute impacts over the last few years of COVID. I think the committee should be aware that twenty twenty-two sick leave figures were around fifty-two, up over fifty-two percent compared to twenty twenty-one. And over thirty-eight thousand seven hundred school-based staff told us that they had COVID during the school year. Those teachers did the right thing by staying at home and I thank the schools for managing our operational complexity in very, very difficult circumstances. There are some significant developments worth bringing to the committee's attention. We've implemented the Priority Recruitment Support Initiative, which has resulted in four hundred and fifty permanent appointments in schools that have had significant number of teacher vacancies and that have been very challenging to fill historically. The Rewarding Excellence in Teacher Reform will see the creation of new in-classroom teaching roles at significantly higher rates of pay. The Temporary Workforce Transition Project, which some people call Temporary to Perm, aims to transition more than fifteen thousand temporary teachers and school-based staff to permanent employment. We're excited to get started on that project. Supported by the New South Wales Productivity Commission, the New South Wales Government recently announced it would provide a new one-year master's pathway. And under the Quality Time Programme, we've been working to reduce admin time so that teachers can focus on teaching and do what they do best. We still have more work to do here. We've been acutely focused on supporting every New South Wales student's mental health and wellbeing, especially those who have experienced multiple natural disasters on top of COVID. We have two thousand non-teaching roles who support students' wellbeing and mental health on the ground. Since starting as the Chief People Officer role at late last November, I have seen firsthand the care, skill and application of our teachers, principals and their staffs. They have a lot to be proud of. I feel we are privileged and proud to work alongside them. We will continue to work hard in supporting our teaching workforce and enhance the education system because of two fundamental truths. Excellence in teaching and teacher quality is the single greatest in-school influence on student engagement and outcomes. And teaching is a rewarding career that vitally contributes to our lives, to our students' lives, to the community and to New South Wales. Thank you and would like to open up to the committee for some questions.
Thank you. Um, I'll invite some questions and I'll start with the Honourable Court Ms Sussos.
Thanks very much. Um, Mr Ruming, I just would ask you, I, I don't know if you saw the, um, testimony from the previous, um, witness who talked about the pressure on school councillors, um, particularly those to, to only, um, be working full-time. Are you aware of an official directive that requires school councillors to work full-time?
No, I'm not, Ms Sussos.
Okay. And can you provide us with an undertaking today that you'll go back and investigate? That if there are school councillors who want to work part-time, that that can be enabled?
Happy to go and have a look at that. I mean, I think we would have part-time, job share, many different forms of, um, workforce management, but right across the department and in schools. So, you know, I think if anything, over the last two years, uh, through COVID, we all learned to be a lot more nimble and agile and we would welcome flexibility across the departments. I'm happy to.
It's fair to say local school managers don't like part-time work, isn't it?
Sorry, could you repeat?
I said it's fair to say that local school managers, principals, don't like part-time work. It makes their job harder. It creates more complexity in terms of the staffing arrangements at schools. Is that a fair statement?
Uh, I'm happy to comment that. That's not my experience. There is odd occasion where operationally it won't work for a school, but my experience in schools as a principal, as a teacher, the schools I visit, is that, uh, part-time is well-accepted, job share is well-accepted. It works well for families, it works well for schools. Uh, you know, there are occasions where, uh, for continuity, uh, pieces that that, um, doesn't work. But certainly I think that the data we have in our schools about the number of, um, point, whatever, uh, FTEs that people are employed in and, uh, as Mr Rumming said, you know, the last couple of years in COVID has certainly taught us about being nimble and flexible. So that's, you know, I, I wouldn't characterise that that's not popular in schools.
Mr Ruming, can you, I just want to move on. We've got really limited time this afternoon. How many school, how many vacancies are in New South Wales schools? How many vacancies for permanent positions are in schools as of today's date?
As of, um, uh, the thirtieth of January, it was two thousand one hundred and sixty-eight.
Sorry, can you say two thousand?
Two thousand one hundred and sixty-eight.
Okay.
Sixty-six percent of which were teachers, um, and the balance of that was, uh, exec staff and staff.
So I think the Federation told us yesterday the figure of thirty-three hundred, so that's about a twelve hundred reduction since then.
Yeah, the team's been working really hard since that data point, which was November. I mean, historically, November is the time that principals start to think about enrolments for the following year, um, requirements for how many teachers they're going to need. Uh, that's when the department gets notified. We start advertising those jobs, working really, um, hard to, to, to fill them. So November is probably the, the peak point, I suppose, when we start to learn about that. Um, and then as we work with principals, um, you know, we, we reduce those numbers as, as we work towards, you know, day one, uh, term one. So, um, you know, that, that's, that's down on the year before.
Okay.
In terms of total numbers, um, we were, uh, two thousand two hundred, uh, around about the, the year before. So it is a reduction, uh, year on year, but that, I had heard that thirty-three hundred number, that was a point in time in November.
And how many schools do we have across the state?
Uh, just over two thousand two hundred, Chair.
Yeah, we know that. Um, so can you just tell us your, um, data? So your data shows that there was two thousand two, I was saying approximately two thousand two hundred on the thirtieth of January twenty twenty-one. That was the highest, sorry, twenty twenty-two, that was the highest in a decade though, wasn't it?
Um, the number for twenty twenty-one, um, sorry, twenty twenty-two was, uh, this time last year was twenty-two sixty-nine, just to be, to give you that number. Uh, and that was higher than, than twenty twenty-one. And I asked the same question actually of, of the team as to, you know, how, how we jumped to twenty-two sixty-nine from the year before. Um, so if I, if I just, for context for the committee, uh, back in two thousand and eighteen, we had seventeen hundred and twenty-seven, um, vacancies, uh, permanent vacancies. In twenty nineteen, we had fifteen hundred and seventy-two. In twenty twenty, we had thirteen hundred and six. And in twenty twenty-one, it was effectively stable at thirteen fourteen. So what that was telling me when I looked at the data, um, when I first arrived late last year was we had, um, successfully reduced, um, permanent teaching vacancies as we got to January of each year. And then I believe it was August of twenty twenty-one, Chair, where, uh, we introduced fifteen hundred, um, APCs. each year, and then I believe it was August of 2021 Chair, where we introduced 1,500 APCNI roles. So I think there was 2,600 actual bodies and positions, but FTE-wise, it was 1,500. So the number jumped back up because a lot of those folks that took those roles were existing teachers within the system. So the recruitment team, as they filled those roles as a commitment to educational outcomes, have been busily over the last 18 months to two years trying to fill those positions. So it was the right decision to have that extra curriculum cover and supporting the schools, but what it didn't mean is that a lot of those positions were occupied by existing, by existing teachers in the system. So we've been, we've been going back to.
Mr Ruming, we've got really limited time, so I'm going to ask you, how many schools have a vacant position? There's 2,200 odd schools, how many schools have a vacant position?
I don't have that figure right in front of me.
I might be able to help the committee.
Thank you, Mr Disdar.
70% of our schools, 70% of 2,200 have zero or one vacancy at the start of the school year, which for our students, as you know, Miss Usos was on Tuesday. We still have about 140 schools to return, our Western Division schools, as you'd be aware, Miss Usos, school development days for them are on Friday this week, Monday next week. We're looking forward to welcoming our kids back there Tuesday, but 70% of the system has zero or one vacancy.
And what about two to five?
We'd have to take, we'd have to come back to you with that.
Okay, can you say, I mean, we've got a really short timeframe for this inquiry, would you be able to see if someone could come back to you? I'd be.
We certainly do our best and if we can't get it to you today, what we'll do is, I think I heard you Chair say, when the, when the hand side comes out, we could maybe include it there.
Thank you very much.
So that figure, yesterday, Mr Peterson indicated that in terms of the assessment of the vacancies, you don't count those positions where you've got someone effectively substantively seconded to another position and that position effectively sits vacant, but it's not reflected in those figures, is that correct?
So the instance that you described there, Mr Di Adam, is where there's a permanent employee who owns a role in that school, who's taken up a temporary role in the system elsewhere. So that temporary role might be for a year two, three, they own that role. That role back at that school is owned by them.
But if no one's in that position.
If you allow me to finish, of course, that then, that then is not a vacancy because it's owned by someone who will return to that school. It's then incumbent on the leadership of that school to try and backfill that role and the way that that role is backfilled is for a temporary appointment. If that's a one-year secondment with a one-year temporary appointment, if it's a two-year secondment with a two-year temporary appointment. But it'd be, it'd be incumbent on us to hold that role because it's owned by that individual.
So in the information you provided, are you talking about permanent vacancies or all vacancies?
So when I said to you 70% of schools have zero to one vacancy, that, that's a vacancy that we need to fill either through central staffing or through recruitment, through local selection, they're permanent FTE vacancies.
So it's not reflective of the actual state of vacancies, is it? Because if a position's temporary, to be filled with a temporary, you're not counting that, but for the kids at that school, they still have a teacher in front of their class, do they?
No, I mean, I think I'm saying to you accurately and to the committee that these are permanent vacancies. Of course, there'll always be temporary and short-term vacancies, they, they range from day-to-day sick leave to secondments like you referenced, Mr Di Adam. A staff member who's been, who's been given a career opportunity in the organisation, who takes up a temporary secondment, maybe to state office, maybe to the Curriculum Directorate.
Mr Disdar, with respect, this is the debate that we've had in the House, we've had a lot, we've had really limited time this afternoon, we'd like.
I'd ask temporarily filled.
We have very limited time this afternoon. Mr Disdar, can I just ask you what, sorry, or Mr Ruming, whoever should answer this, what proportion of teachers are teaching out of field in secondary schools? Out of area, out of specialist training?
I'm happy to assist Mr Ruming there. Our data in the department shows that nationally in Australia, across jurisdiction, we have the lowest out-of-area teaching.
And what's that figure?
I believe that figure is 21% of our teachers.
So one in five teachers is teaching out of the area that they were trained in.
Well, let me answer the question you asked. Let me get to that and then you might ask me another question. But you asked about the figure and I told you that it's 21%, it's the lowest in the country. And out-of-field, out-of-field does not mean that there isn't a qualified teacher in front of those students. Also, what I find in my operational experience is that there are teachers in the system who put their hands up and want to be trained in subject areas they were not tertiary qualified for, to be able to be qualified to teach those subjects. So let me give you a real example.
You've given the answer, can I just ask?
I think.
Chair, Mr Disdar's example, I think the examples are.
I think the example's really important.
Okay, we've literally got 20.
No, no, I understand that, however, Mr Disdar is trying to provide an answer and I'll allow him to complete his answer before we ask any questions. Order, I won't have reflections like that of the witness, please. Mr Disdar, you have the call.
No, I'd like to, I'd like to go to some misconception that sometimes happens that I find with out-of-field. We've got teachers who self-nominate, particularly in the secondary settings, to be trained in other subject areas because they want to be able to teach other subjects.
Okay, and I take that point, Mr Disdar. Yeah, I take, I take your point, I understand your point. Mr Disdar, where was the data, where was the data that you were basing that figure that we have the lowest in the country? Where was that data collected from?
Well, the 21% figure I gave you is the departmental figure.
Okay.
And so that, that.
And the comparison that we're the lowest in the country, where did that data come from?
That's the advice that I've got from our, our department, so we would have compared that to what other jurisdictions have.
Okay, if you can, when Handside comes back, tell us where that came from. CC conducted a teacher survey mid-last year that included questions about the impact of shortages on New South Wales Public Schools. What were the results of that story, of that survey?
Sorry, I'm not sure of the survey you're responding to.
CC conducted a teacher survey in the middle of last year, you would be aware of that?
Well, we, we conducted a assessment of the impact of COVID, if that's the report, have you got the report there? Do you want to quote the report or name the report?
And it included the impact of shortages on New South Wales Public Schools.
Yeah, it'd be good if you could name the report. CC have conducted a number of surveys, a number of studies over the last three years through the period of COVID. I could go to the check-in assessment reports.
It's the 2022 CC Teacher Survey.
Okay, yes.
You're aware of that one?
I don't have it in front of me, yes.
Okay, so, but what were the results of the survey? Are you aware of the results of that survey?
I don't have the details in front of me. Is there a specific question?
I'm asking if you're aware of the results of the survey.
I'll just, have you got a copy to provide, Mr Disdar?
I don't have a copy of, I can't print.
I don't have one in front of me.
That's not my question, my question is, are you aware of the results of the survey?
If I, if I, if I've got the right report, yes, I would, I would have read it at the time.
Okay, right. And will you commit to providing a copy of those results?
Again, if I, if you can name it and we'll get it on record in Handside.
It's the 2022 Teacher Survey conducted by CC.
Okay, well, I'll go back into the organisation and see where that report's at. We normally release and publish all our CC reports, so I'll go and find out and we'll make sure in Handside we capture it.
So we've been told that the data won't be completed, the data checks won't be completed until late March, which seems like a, it's nine months after the survey was done. Can you explain why there has been such a delay?
Well, let me go back, like I said, and find out where they're at with the report and the study. My experience with all of our CC studies and all of our CC reports and all of our CC surveys is that we've made publicly available reports, so I don't think that that won't be the case in this instance, but let me go back and find out and on Handside, let's put down the detail of when that would be released.
Okay. Mr Ruming, what percentage of permanent teachers in their first five years of teaching left in 2022?
Let me just find that for you, I believe it was just over 10%.
10% in their first five years? And how many resignations and retirements were they in, were there in 2022?
We're crunching the data for 2022 right now, so when schools come back, we obviously connect with those to make sure that our data is, is up to speed and accurate. The 2021 figures was 2.2% for resignations and 2.2% for retirements.
Yeah, when will you have that data, the resignations and the retirement start?
I've been told in the first quarter.
So you won't have that for another couple of months?
Another couple of weeks.
Okay.
Because we're in February, so.
Yep, okay. How many additional teachers do New South Wales Public Schools need each year to 2030?
Let me just grab that figure for you. I, I have the supply and demand numbers up until 2026, so I'd have to take it on notice to 2030 and provide it back to the committee.
Okay, do you want to provide me a 2026 then?
Yep, sure. Demand is, for 2023, is 71,021, and supply is 84,199. In 2024, it's 71,546 and supply is 83,131. For 2025, it's 72,164 and supply is 82,065. And for 2026, demand is 72,704, supply is 81,013.
Thank you very much. Can I ask you about the recruitment of school councillors? There was an election commitment that this government made, can you tell us how many school councillors have been recruited? Over the last four years?
So I'm happy to help out with that question, if that's okay, Miss Usos.
Yeah, 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 I'm relaxed about who provides answers.
Okay, so an additional 100 school councillors have been put in place, the allocation of those will be finished, that's for high schools by June 2023. They've increased from 790 in 2015 to 1,249 in January 2023. As of the 10th of January 2023, 92.9% of these positions are filled. 325 scholarships have been awarded since 2016 to support graduates in these roles.
I'm just going to invite Ms Boyd to ask questions, I know Mr Di Adam.
Can I ask a clarification on the data that was provided on the supply and demand? Was that headcount figures or was that FTE?
So the demand is FTE and the supply is headcount figures, maybe another way of
Isn't that oranges and apples then?
That is my understanding.
Thank you, can I go back then to the numbers of, of teachers, of teacher shortages? The number you gave us before, the 2,200-ish?
2168, yeah.
2168, so I haven't been part of these discussions before about how we're getting these figures. So if we could perhaps just look at, from a, I guess a layperson's perspective, what we want to know is how many additional teachers need to be recruited to fill the needs of every New South Wales school. So I think we all know what we're talking about, so I don't care what the permanent, you know, that this job is there and they've gone off and done something else and now we need another teacher for it. What is the figure when we're looking at how many positions need to be filled in order for us to have a fully functioning school in each of our schools in New South Wales?
So when I gave those examples, I was only responding to Mr Di Adam's question around the secondment, like we indicated through Mr Ruming, there's 2,200 schools in the system and at 30 January, the vacancy rate is 2,168 positions. They are 2,168 positions that we need to recruit a qualified teacher for, whether that's in a primary school, whether that's in a secondary school with a particular.
And that's, you could be recruiting them on either a permanent or a temporary basis?
That's, that's, they are permanent vacancies that we recruit.
Okay, but I'm still talking about, again, the ones where there's not a permanent space available because that person's been seconded, but there's still a space available, there's still a class without a teacher. When we include those as well, what number do we get?
So they're, they're temporary recruitments, we'd have to take that number on notice, the number we've got in front of us that we've given to the committee are permanent recruits.
You can understand though, if you're trying to assess whether or not your schools are functioning properly, then the number that you really need is how many actual gaps there are in terms of vacancies, I don't, it doesn't matter what you call it.
Miss Boyd, I fully understand your line of questioning, it's a good line of questioning. The operational requirements of a school go to, go to permanent vacancy as well as what you might need by temporary and casual vacancy as well.
Sure, we're talking about.
Can I just clarify?
If you understand the, where we want to get to, you clearly understand where we want to get to in terms of the numbers that we need, you don't want to give us that information.
No, Mr Disdar said he'll take it on notice.
Not at all, I said, I said we'll go back and see what we've got by way of that figure. It's quite a complex situation, Mr Di Adam, which you'd, you'd respect and appreciate because that casual and temporary workforce range from a daily basis to a yearly basis. So it's a very difficult figure to nail down. I know the keenness for that figure, I've been in the principal seat, I understand what Ms Abigail Boyd is asking of us as a department, it goes to the operational requirements. The permanent vacancy figure is one that's a lot easier to attain. The figure around also including temp and casual is a very difficult figure to nail down across the system because of the variance that occurs from each and every day through the operational requirements of a school.
Can I, can I, before, order, 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 before I pass to Mr Farlow, I just wanted to clarify something just from my own mind. When Ms Boyd was asking about all vacancies include, like, so permanents and temporaries, that number would vary from day to day because temporaries also includes perhaps someone who's on a sick day or unable to come to work for whatever reason. So the temporary number would, would quite much vary on a day-to-day basis?
Can I just finish my?
Sure, sorry, and then I'll, Mr Farlow.
So the ones that you were referring to who are on this secondment, presumably they're on secondment for a set period of time?
Yes.
So you know what that is, you know what that number is. So when you talk about, of course, there's going to be fluctuations, but we would have an idea, wouldn't we? So how many people are in that programme?
And that's why I said, let me take that and go back and see what we've got. That programme of secondment, again, that's complex if you want me to unpack it, there are secondments that are three months, six months, 12 months, two years, up to three years. So that, that's why it relates to short-term coverage and longer-term coverage. I'd also want to make this clear Chair to the committee, that figure of 2,168 that we are permanently recruiting for across 2,200 schools does not mean that there is not a qualified teacher in that school filling that gap. We're undertaking a permanent recruitment, Mr Chair, and there is a temporary or casual backfill in that position while we undertake the recruitment.
Not necessary. Sorry, just one, just one last thing.
Ms Boyd, so thank you for the clarification, I'll let Ms Boyd finish her question because she's been so patient.
Not really, but thank you.
No, I know, it's been nice.
Okay, I'm going to, again, I just want to do it from a kind of non-bureaucratic language. When, so if I'm having a dinner party for six people, I have a, have a table with six chairs and I've lent a couple of those chairs out and someone asks me, how many chairs do you have? I don't say six because I had six, but I've got these two that are somewhere else, I say four, and I need to know that because I'm about to have a dinner party. You have an entire school system and you need to have all of those seats filled with teachers and yet you can't tell me right now how many teachers we are missing in order to be running those schools.
I don't agree with the premise, I wish, I wish schools were as easy as a dinner party, they're not, they are complex operations. Again, let me repeat, across 2,200 schools, 2,168 permanent vacancies that we're working on that are backfilled.
Which is a meaningless number for us because it's not actually.
I don't, I don't concur that it's a meaningless number, it's a very important number for us, it's a number that we're working on to fill in our schools in a permanent capacity and while we're doing that, there is a temporary, a temporary or a casual teacher in place.
You can't, you can't actually say that.
I'm actually going to.
You can't, you can't actually say that, Mr. Disdar, that's not correct, is it?
Order, order, Mr. Farlow, you have the call.
Actually, I'll pick up on that then, just if Mr. Disdar can actually outline on that point that with these 2,168 vacancies, how many of those are actually covered at the moment by a temporary or a casual?
And this goes to Mr. De Adam's comment. So we work with our directors' educational leadership, as you know, Mr. Farlow, in groups of 20, looking after schools. And we go back into that school with that principal and say, while that permanent vacancy is there, have you got cover? How can we help you? Have you got a temp? Have you got a casual? And we have that across each school and we could summate that as well. That's why we're confident when we say those gaps are temporarily or casually filled while we're recruiting.
So I think.
If that was the case, Mr. Disdar, then we would have no split classes, would we? We would have no split classes. But we've had a number of witnesses come into this inquiry telling us about split classes because you're not able to fill those positions with a temporary or a casual every day.
I'm happy to answer on that, but that's another topic.
You can have to call and ask a question.
I'd welcome answering on that, but that's another topic. Because I'm saying to you, on the permanent recruitment vacancies, how they're covered. I'm happy to cover split classes. Split classes, as you heard from parents like I heard, far from ideal, far from optimal, but occurs when a teacher calls in sick, a teacher is absent on short notice. We're not able to cover that operationally with a casual on that day. And I commend schools with what they do when confronted with that operational circumstance because they still owe a duty of care to those children. They still look for the learning continuity opportunity. And if that's a kindergarten class, for example, and that teacher is called in sick and cannot be replaced at short notice, then we look at how to cover that class and it may mean that those 20 kids are split across other kindergarten classes or early stage-one classes. So we can continue to both provide duty of care and also their teaching and learning requirements.
So, no, I haven't finished my question. So I might go back to Mr. Rummings. And you talked about in your opening statement, the teacher supply strategy and the initial green shoots. I would categorise them as in terms of how that's working and how there's an expectation now that there'll be a surplus by 2027. You said some of the programmes were performing better than anticipated. Do you want to outline what some of those might be and where we can potentially see, potentially some more teachers coming into our system through those programmes?
No, I appreciate the question. Grow Your Own, I think, is a great example of oversubscription and positive early momentum. I think the original target for that programme was 100. That target is now 500, given the sort of the regional response, which is terrific. So we are very excited about that because it's, you know, local people in local areas. That was always one of the goals to try and uncover if that was a potential source for those regions. So that one's going, that one's going quite well. I think even though it's, you know, had some, a very slow start, the recruitment beyond New South Wales, I mean, the 500 applications that are serious applications. I think at one point we had 11,000 expressions of interest, but that doesn't always necessarily sort of filter through to serious applications. And we have 500 that we're, you know, we're reviewing at the moment. And that we've got 12 that have commenced.
And these are the overseas applications?
Yeah, if you include Queenslanders overseas. We had one Queenslander come in. No, they've come from a variety of different countries, countries such as.
I thought Queensland was part of New South Wales when it came to state of origin.
Well, depends what you ask. So Singapore, South Africa, the UK, Fiji, Zimbabwe. I think, you know, some great diversity amongst the first 12 and then the next five that are coming in, 23 that are.
And so for those 500 shortlisted applicants, what's the, or expressions of interest, what's the sort of timeframe for those to actually be in jurisdiction, ready to go?
I'd probably have to come back on notice with specific timing. And the recruitment team is working through those 500 applications as we speak, so.
Okay.
I mean, I would imagine that we will have a fairly good indication of how fast we can progress with them during 2023.
Okay. And if I can just ask as well, one of the, one of the questions we've asked about the current vacancies, one of the areas that the Teachers' Federation outlined to us yesterday to ask on as well was in terms of geographic issues with those vacancies. I think we've heard more and more that there might have been expected problems in terms of regional areas for a long time in terms of vacancies, but that's now come more to potentially Western Sydney as well. Can you tell us with respect to those vacancies, are there any sort of hotspots that we should be aware of where there might be more vacancies than expected?
I might, I might pass to Mr. Disdar to talk specifically about those schools, those areas.
I'd have to take on and come back through Hansard around the exact specifics by way of numbers. That would be difficult to.
Okay, but there's no particular areas that you can just sort of outline to the committee that you've seen or unexpected vacancies?
Why it's not easy to directly give a, you know, unequivocal answer on is because predominantly some of the struggle used to be rural, regional and remote. But we've had in play across the last six months priority recruitment teams, a great initiative under Mr. Rummings' leadership where he's cordoned off HR teams to work on what were hotspots. And we've had great effect and impact in personally case managing with the principal those sites. So what were, what were some complex geography has been vastly improved by way of recruitment over the last six months? You know, I know of cases of 10, 12 positions in rural and regional schools being filled. And this goes to the flexibility around the incentive packages that have been available, greater flexibility about what we might put in play there. So that's why I just hesitate to give you exact numbers because it used to be a predominant rural, regional and remote hotspot problem. And a lot of that has been gratefully been able to be tackled through this priority recruitment team.
Good news.
One of the other areas potentially is the Hawkesbury, where I know they've struggled to get casuals, for example.
And we heard some evidence on that this morning.
Yeah, and one of the initiatives there is to be put, have a casual supplementation where hubs have been put in place for extra staff member for five schools that can be deployed locally. So that's been a really productive outcome. So, you know, all credit to the people group and their responsiveness to this in, over the last few months and over the last 12 months. As I think Mr. Rummings said, the COVID has taught us to be more agile around these spaces. So there are some good initiatives that address the fact that, you know, nationally we have shortages in a whole range of areas. And, you know, that poses challenges.
And I take it with that figure as well, you had of, I think, 52%. Was it increase in sick leave? Or that's something that the department's going to have to work with more and more?
Well, I would believe, you know, when you see the sick leave up 60% of our, in our 90,000 teachers in one year from 2009, you know, that's, they're incredible figures, right? And they put stress on our system. You know, the conversation about split classes that I know you've heard about over the last couple of days, none of us are stepping away from during COVID. That was one of the ways we had to manage, given that illness. So, you know, we start the year, as Mr. Disdar said, very confident that our schools have got pieces in place, right, to ensure that classes are covered for week one, day one, term one.
I was going to say, it's also worth, sorry.
After you've completed.
Just quickly on the priority recruitment support initiative. Since that team got sort of organised and put together last year, we've had 450 permanent appointments through that programme. And schools don't necessarily stay on that, they'll come on or they'll come off. The principals that we've been working with have been very positive around the additional support in those harder recruitment areas, but they might get to a point where their baseline staffing is to a point where they're not a priority school anymore because we've been able to successfully work with them. So schools come in and off that list. So I wouldn't want the committee to think that they're the naughty list or anything like that. They reach out, we see the numbers with them and then we work towards filling those gaps.
I was just going to say we are out of time, however, noting that we did go a little bit over with the last session. And in fairness to the opposition, I'll offer, then we'll, because she was seeking the call earlier, unless you want to.
I just have one question that I'll pass to my colleague.
Well, I've got one, I was going to allow a couple more minutes. I've got one, time for one more question, so either of you can choose it.
I've interrupted a few times, but I haven't actually had the call.
Well, I mean, between the two of you, you can, you can choose, but.
I wanted to ask about the permanent teacher, temporary to permanent proposal.
Yep.
The initial announcement was 10,000. I think that's been subsequently up to 15,000. The language is quite interesting. You say you're going to offer permanent roles. That doesn't necessarily mean that you actually are going to shift the title number or the numbers significantly. How many permanents, how many temporaries have been converted to permanent today?
I mean, we've had a number of staff go from permanent casual to temporary, temporary to permanent, casual to permanent. I mean, I'd have to take that question on notice to come back to you. But what I can say.
You've got a target that's present, you've got a baseline.
Yeah, yeah.
How many off the baseline have you converted from temporary to permanent today?
So the temporary to permanent project or initiative is starting in term one. In specific to those 10 or 11,000 teachers and 4,000 support staff, the first contracts will be given out mid-term one. We've set a deadline of 2023. We don't think this should drag into 2024. And we're working closely in a number of meetings with the Federation on the sort of the execution of that programme. I would suspect every day there are teachers that are moving from temporary to permanent. But in specific to that initiative, those first contracts will be handed out during term one.
No, no one's been converted yet, is there?
Can I just add, Mr. De Adam, why we set offer is, it'll be incumbent on the person whether they want to take up the permanent offer that's before them. And so like Mr. Rummings said, we're working with stakeholders, including the New South Wales Teachers' Federation, to just nail down the details. And we'll be going out in term one to what is a workforce of somewhere between 11,000 and 15,000 to give them that offer.
How many of those are teachers and how many of those are support staff?
That's very much the final, final question.
I'm happy to answer it. The target is 11, we believe it's around 11,000 teachers and around 4,000 support staff. And that project has kicked off last year in terms of us getting ready, putting the right staff in place to do it. It's not as simple as printing off 15,000 contracts and turning up to a school. We've got technology behind the scenes. We've had to build, you know, a workforce that's able to execute this particular project and programme. So we've been doing that behind the scenes, you know, November, December, January. And we anticipate being able to hand out this first set of contracts as we roll out across the year and be concluded by the end of 2023.
Can I just clarify one other thing? Chair, for Mr. De Adam, those figures we gave early on, demand and supply across the years, that were both FTE across demand and supply. Remember when you said that's not apples and apples, they're both FTE.
They're both FTE. And the other correction I would like to make, as I mentioned SAS staff before in the 2168, SAS staff are not included in the vacancy figures of 2168.
Thank you very much for those clarifications. Well, thank you for your appearance today. As was mentioned earlier, the committee's resolved that we have insufficient time for supplementary questions. So if you could please provide any additional evidence or information within 24 hours of your receipt of the transcript, the hearing today, that would be very much appreciated. Thank you very much. And that draws to a conclusion this set of hearings on this inquiry. So thank you so much for your appearance.